Okay, we have people outside to assist residents who are outside.
We will start in a minute.
Okay, very good. Mr. Carlson, would you read it into the record here in your ordinance?
Sure, Madam Mayor, thank you. Tonight's point of business is, let's give it a hulky round of consideration and warning being zero seven dot one.
The audio is terrible.
In the name of the Township of Morris, Morris County, New Jersey, recommending the adoption of the Abbey slash former hall redevelopment plan, providing the property identified on Township's tax map as block eight four oh nine, lot one, that being three fifty five Madison Avenue, Morris Township, New Jersey, pursuant to all or redevelopment in housing law, NJ S A three eight colon four eight, there's one, head set.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. I'd like to welcome everyone. Good evening, and welcome you to tonight's special meeting. Obviously, COVID has created a unique set of circumstances for tonight's meeting. We've got, I believe, approximately twenty or so people in person at this meeting in the parking lot outside of this building, and we've got about, I don't have an exact number, but I'm estimating approximately fifty people or more.
Sixty.
Sixty participating by Zoom. Tonight's hybrid structure is our way of responding to the competing and exceedingly difficult demands COVID has placed on all of us. On the one hand, we want to accommodate safe in-person participation in this meeting to the maximum extent possible. On the other, we want anyone who's not capable attending in person to be able to participate as fully as possible via remote access, namely Zoom. For the people who are here in person, besides the, I, our apologies for the technical difficulties that are going on, but for the people who are out there, the number one most important consideration is to observe social distancing. We have several ambassadors circulating outdoors to answer any questions you may have and to guide you into the building when we come to that portion of the building, the meeting. And I will explain more details about that when we get to that portion of the meeting. We're here tonight to begin our public hearings on the redevelopment plan for the Abbey. The proposed plan that's before us outlines a project possibility that raises many significant and sometimes conflicting considerations for everyone in our community. Our purpose tonight is to begin the formal process of sharing those considerations with each other. The plan before us is forty pages long. Obviously, it includes a lot of information and it raises a lot of questions. Sharing these questions and considerations is a complex task. Clearly, there's a lot of interest in this project. Clearly, members of the public have a full range of questions, comments, concerns, and suggestions that everyone is eager to share. We've worked very hard to ensure that tonight's meeting is as efficient and constructive and informative as possible. With that all in mind, a few words about how tonight's meeting will work. We'll start with an introduction by our planner, Mr. Phillips, who will provide background information on how this plan was developed, how the decision-making process on it will work going forward, and also, of course, the contents of the plan. We'll follow Mr. Phillips' presentation with questions by members of the Township Committee. Following that, we will open the meeting to public comment. We'll start the public comment portion of tonight's meeting by hearing from a professional planner, Mr. Peter Stepp, who will speak on behalf of some of our residents who have seen significant objections to this plan. Mr. Stepp's report will be followed by questions from Township Committee members. Next up, we'll hear from representatives of the Morris County Historical Society and the Morris Township Historic Preservation Commission. These historical perspective reports will be followed also by questions from the Township Committee members. Following that, we'll open the meeting to questions and comments from the public. We will be taking questions from the public, quote, "in person and by Zoom." I'll explain more of the details about how we'll do that when we get to that portion of the meeting. Given the large number of people who wish to be heard, we want to include in tonight's meeting comments from as many people as possible. To do so, we will be limiting comments to five minutes per person. Once everyone has had a chance to speak for the first time, we'll open the meeting to additional rounds of comments from people who have more to share. We may or may not get to a second round of comments from residents tonight. As you know, we do plan to continue this meeting on September third. As questions are asked, for the most part, we will not be providing immediate answers in response. The reason for that is we don't want to get into the lengthy back-and-forth exchanges that are possible in that situation. Instead, we're going to keep a list of the questions that come up and answer all of them toward the end of tonight's meeting. At approximately nine thirty, we'll stop taking questions and comments from the public. At that time, Mr. Phillips will answer all the questions that have come up to him, and that will be followed by Township Committee members answering all the questions that have come up for us. We anticipate ending tonight's meeting sometime between ten and ten thirty P M. We also anticipate taking a break sometime perhaps around eight o'clock, sometime between eight and eight thirty, I would say. As I hope you can see, all of us on the Township Committee fully understand how important this project is to our community. Our goal is to reach a decision that serves the best interest of our community. Public hearing is a vital part of that decision-making process. Discussing residents' concerns and the options for addressing them is a particularly important purpose of tonight's meeting. As the decision-makers in this process, each of us on the Township Committee will listen very carefully and reflect deeply on every comment and suggestion that is shared. We know we need time to process and digest all of the information, ideas, and modifications that will come up. That is why we have committed not to vote at either of the public hearings, but we will vote at a subsequent Township Committee meeting instead. And with that, if no one else has anything to...
Madam Mayor, may I say something? Peter Mankuso?
Yes, sure, Mr. Mankuso, go ahead.
I have just gotten an email from people outside saying that they, that sound quality is very, very poor, and they're only getting one in four words. And then someone else said to me, "It's getting better, but it is still very, very speculative." I would also like to make a point and say, as I've said for the past several meetings, I just think that having a virtual meeting is not in the best interest of our town, our township, and all the people who are working on this. It could result in a decision that could affect the town for many, many years to come. Face-to-face meetings give us the chance to more easily talk and work out knotty and difficult problems. This virus puts us in a quasi-untenable position because the communication lines will be hard-pressed to allow full communication between the developers and the concerned citizens and the Township Committee and our 24,000 people. I still think that virtual planners, committee, and resident input will add innumerable hours to the testimony and lengthen the process measurably. As I mentioned several times, four people spoke two meetings ago, and it took forty-four minutes. So my final thought in that area is the old adage of act in haste, repent in leisure. And then I have one more thing to bring up, ma'am. It seems that lots and lots of dialogue has transpired, and that some of us have not been privy to it. I am a duly-elected official. I have twenty percent of the voting power on this committee, and there were many meetings that have taken place. Now, I grant you the fact that meetings should take place and you should be part of them, but I think you should have the ability to speak to each of us and tell us what has transpired at the meeting because we're actually acting in the dark because we have no idea of what's been said and what the situation has gone on between yourself and the planners. So, that's what I have to say for now. I'll have more later.
Yes, you raised a lot of points right here at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Mankuso. Your point about preferring in-person is well-taken. We've discussed that repeatedly. A majority of the Township has agreed to proceed with this hybrid model, which does include in-person. And as far as your other point, there have, I don't, I'm, we'll have to talk, I don't know what you're talking about. So, we'll talk about that at another time. And I don't want to get into it right this minute. I would like to keep the meeting along, but your, your point is understood, and you and I will discuss it, and if needed, we'll comment further at another point in the meeting. But I'd like to get the meeting going, and at this point, it is up to Mr. Phillips to present his report to help everyone understand the redevelopment plan that is before us. So, Mr. Phillips, would you please go ahead?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hear you.
Excellent. So, I'd like to begin with a sort of a brief history of how we got here. And I'm going to go back to cite the New Jersey's Local Redevelopment and Housing Law, which basically gives municipalities the power to designate properties as areas in need of redevelopment, provided that certain criteria are met. And back in 2018, the Township Committee directed the Planning Board to conduct an investigation to determine whether the Abbey property qualified for redevelopment area status, consistent with the applicable criteria in the statute. The Planning Board undertook that investigation. They held a public hearing, and they ultimately recommended to the Township Committee that the property did indeed meet the statutory criteria. And based on that recommendation, the Township Committee, by resolution in October of 2018, declared the Abbey as in need of redevelopment. So, consistent with the enabling statute, the next step in the process is the preparation and adoption of a redevelopment plan, which is what this public hearing is essentially all about. As I'm sure most of you are aware, in terms of the property itself and the immediate context, the Abbey property is just under four acres in size. It has frontage on Madison Avenue to the northeast, Canfield Road to the northwest. To the southeast, there are single-family homes having access from Crescent Drive. To the southwest, there are homes having access to and from Canfield Road. Across Canfield Road is an office building, Crummond Foster. Across Madison Avenue to the northeast are also office buildings. And as you're all well aware, other uses along Madison Avenue include banks, gas stations, a hotel, and also, a single-family homes. So, historically, the Abbey building was originally constructed in 1904. It was built as a manor home, which was modeled after fifteenth and sixteenth-century English prototypes, and the architecture is based on the design of Anna Castle in Northumberland, England. And as you're also all aware, the structure is a remnant of what has, what's been referred to as Millionaire's Row, which is the stretch of Madison Avenue between Morris Town and Madison that during the area's gilded age was lined by large estate homes. From 1961 to 1984, the structure served as Saint Marc's Lutheran Church. I would also indicate that in 1985, Anna Call was listed on the State and National Register of Historic Places. Subsequent to its use as a church, the building was sold to new owners. They converted it to an office building. At one time, it was the offices of a personal wealth management division of a bank. There was also a medical office use in there. The x-ray room is, still exists. The current owner basically purchased the property in 2008. The building has not been used. It's basically been vacant since that time. And I will just also say that additions and modifications to the Abbey have taken place at various times over the roughly 115-year history, and that has been done to accommodate the various adaptive reuses of the structure. Before addressing sort of the redevelopment plan particulars, I'd like to discuss a little bit as to how a redevelopment plan differs from conventional zoning and also what has transpired since late 2018, when the Township Committee declared this area to be in need of redevelopment. And some of you have some familiarity with redevelopment plans, including in Morris Township, and you may have heard references to redevelopment plans basically being the equivalent of legal spot zoning or zoning on steroids and similar kinds of characterizations. The bottom line is that a redevelopment plan is a comprehensive document that essentially establishes a series of land use, development, and design standards that are intended to produce a specific development project that is tailor-made to either a particular tract or a particular area. And often, a plan, a redevelopment plan is prepared with a particular end-user in mind, as was the case here. Typically, there is also a redevelopment agreement, and in many instances, there's a financial agreement between the developer and the end-user and the municipality. And one of the other distinctions between redevelopment and conventional zoning is that the municipality is much more active in the process in redevelopment as opposed to conventional zoning. But I am a little bit getting ahead of myself as those agreements that I described, and the official designation of a redeveloper cannot occur until a redevelopment plan is adopted. If and when a redevelopment plan is adopted, then these next steps fall into place. But again, that cannot take place until a redevelopment plan is adopted. Several other points on redevelopment vis-a-vis conventional zoning. So first, whereas the OSGU zone, which is the underlying zone designation for this property, has development standards in the Morris Township zoning ordinance that encompass probably no more than one to two pages, this redevelopment plan, as the mayor cited, is forty pages long. Secondly, unlike conventional zoning, which cannot basically do this, this redevelopment plan effectively mandates the retention and restoration of the most historically significant portion of the Abbey building itself. You cannot do that through conventional zoning, and that is obviously one of the driving forces behind this particular plan. Third, the plan before you this evening is an outgrowth of numerous meetings and discussions between the Township's professionals with feedback over time from the administration and the prospective end-user that have occurred over the last year and a half. And essentially, not much has happened since the COVID period of the last five months. You may have noted that the date of this document was March of 2020, and we all know that life has changed since that point in time. I will also indicate that it's no secret to anyone that the prospective end-user is RH, also known as Restoration Hardware, and RH has a significant track record in the restoration of historic buildings throughout the United States. We'll also say that the conceptual layouts, the designs with regard to the building have gone through a number of iterations over the course of the timeframe that I mentioned, but the plan that is now under consideration is the end result of that particular process. So, having said that, back to the screen, and we have up before you the planned vision and objectives. And we outline in that portion of the document the specific goals and objectives of the redevelopment plan. And principally, the principal goal is to preserve a historic structure and grounds that are important to the history of Morris Township by encouraging a, an appropriate reuse option that sort of responds to the demands of the marketplace. Also, one of the goals is to transform the premises into a productive retail commercial property that not only will provide an increase in the economic base of the township, but will hopefully serve as a stabilizing force along the Madison Avenue corridor, which is clearly in transition. And I say that not only because of the fact that a lot of operations have basically closed down, but I will tell you that the TCC has been seeing a number of applications for both residential and commercial use, some of which, and I can share this later, are probably not what I characterize as desirable for the corridor. So, again, I think one of the objectives of this plan is to hopefully stabilize what has begun to happen and is likely to continue to happen along this quarter. And then lastly, one of the main goals of this redevelopment plan is to establish both building and site design standards that will ultimately foster high-quality development while staying sensitive to the development pattern of nearby residential neighborhoods. So, if we can go to the basic land use and development plan, if we can skip, we'll, we'll deal with the master plan later on, but go to the permitted uses. Essentially, what we are providing for in this redevelopment plan in terms of permitted uses is a home furnishing store, which may include galleries, showroom spaces, an outdoor patio for display of merchandise, consultation and meeting areas, and offices for related design services. The other principal use is a restaurant that's required to be operated under common control with the home furnishing store, and which may include a related wine bar. The restaurant has to be physically connected to and integrated with the home furnishings store. One thing of note, under prohibited uses, we have expressly indicated that no warehousing or storage of product inventory, other than for purposes of customer display, shall be permitted, nor shall any customer deliveries originate from the home furnishing store, other than the potential for the sell-off of floor models. Clearly, the intent was that this would be a retail establishment and not a distribution facility. That would occur in some other location. We have a series of bulk standards, which typically you would find in not only a zoning ordinance, but in a redevelopment plan. They would include a series of building setbacks, which are shown on the exhibit to all the external property boundaries. We also established setbacks to parking areas. And one of the key things that we've established in this plan is the preservation of the front lawn area. And it's intended that a significant portion of that front lawn that exists today, basically extending to the corner of Canfield Road, be retained and preserved. In terms of the building yield itself and how the property is to be used, the plan specifies that roughly fourteen thousand square feet of the existing Abbey is to be repurposed for retail gallery or showroom space, and that would be basically spread between the first and second floor. There would be a new modern gallery of fifteen thousand square feet, which would be spread across two floors, and in between the two, there would be a restaurant, and as I mentioned, the potential for an associated wine bar of fifteen thousand square feet. It would contain a single-story restaurant with indoor seating and food and beverage preparation space. There would be a maximum of one hundred and twenty seats indoors and a maximum of forty-four seats basically permitted, again, indoors as part of the wine bar. In addition, there would be provision for basement space. There is some basement space in the existing Abbey, and that basement space would be used for a variety of functions, including gallery space as well as storage offices and other employee-related space. There is also provision for an outdoor space, an outdoor patio area, which would be limited to eleven thousand square feet, and that would be available for display of merchandise. The outdoor patio would be located on either side, basically north and south of the restaurant, and the outdoor patio may be used for informal seating. However, there would be no outdoor dining, no outdoor food service, or waiter or waitress service permitted within this area. And I would like to just say that originally, while we were going through iterations of the plan, outdoor dining seating was proposed, and the TCC felt that it was too intense for the site and would generate additional parking demands which could not be basically suitably accommodated on the site. So, basically, that was eliminated from the redevelopment plan and program. In addition to that, with regard to the potential for the outdoor dining, it was felt that the prohibition of outdoor dining would afford greater protection to the immediately adjacent homes. The maximum building height for the new construction would be two stories. That would be basically the new wing on the other side of what would be a one-story restaurant, and the, there would be provision to allow a portion of the building to go higher than somewhere between thirty-five and forty feet if a vaulted or peaked skylight was proposed. The latest concept that was shared with us did not include that peak or vaulted skylight. So, as I recall, the, the actual height of the addition at its highest point would be under forty feet, or as I recall, somewhere between thirty-five and forty feet. There are coverage requirements in the plan, twenty-five percent for building, sixty-five percent for lot coverage. There are provisions in the plan for the demolition and decommissioning of a portion of the Abbey, as well as specifications for the new construction. For those of you that are familiar with the property, there's a long and narrow wing at the southern portion of the building that will be demolished in order to open up the site to a more efficient layout and pattern and allow for better overall site circulation and a more efficient parking supply. That area is probably about a three thousand square foot footprint. And as you may recall, when we did the area in need of redevelopment investigation, the, we did both interior and exterior inspections. We had the benefit of an architectural report that was prepared by the property owner and prospective end-user, and this southerly portion of the building is in a, is in a deteriorated condition. The roof is compromised. There's been deterioration of some of the internal space due to water damage. The parapets have sort of fallen into disrepair. So, that southern section basically would be demolished as part of this redevelopment plan. I will say that no rooms in the area to be demolished, which was originally the service quarters, have particular historic significance, and they were the most altered in terms of the interior of the building while this property was going through multiple users. The demolition, what's key is the demolition leaves the main body of the Abbey intact, and this includes all of the most significant portions of the building, such as the Great Hall. And this includes all of the most significant portions of the building, such as the great hall, the library, the dining room, the breakfast room, and the drawing rooms. Uh, in terms of the new, uh, construction, as, uh, I indicated to you, uh, the plan mandates basically the, uh, two new wings, uh, the one-story center portion and the two-story, uh, portion on the other side. Uh, and essentially, uh, again, as I've indicated, what those, uh, new wings would be used for with basically the, the restaurant wine bo- bar in the entry being the middle or one-story, uh, portion. Uh, I would only add that this time that both the, uh, Morris Township Historic Preservation Commission and the Morris County Historical Society have submitted, uh, letters of support for the, uh, plan. Uh, in terms of site access, uh, the current entry driveway to the, uh, abbey from Madison Avenue, uh, will be maintained as a two-way driveway. Um, two additional driveways are permitted to be constructed from Canfield Road. However, both of them with right turn only exits from the site. The plan basically says no left-hand turns out onto Canfield Road. And I will tell you that the TCC insisted on this restriction again in deference to the adjoining Canfield Road, uh, neighborhood. The plan also envisions sort of a longer-term, uh, project, uh, which would be the realignment of Canfield Road, uh, west of the intersection, uh, with, uh, Madison Avenue to basically align it uh, as part of a four-way intersection, uh, with Punch Bowl Road. So I want to spend a little bit of time on parking. Uh, it's certainly worthy of discussion in light of some of the requirements in this plan. So the TCC spent a good deal of time on this and had numerous discussions with RH and its consultants. And the bottom line is that RH believes that somewhere between 115 and 120 spaces will adequately serve this project. And part of its rationale is that there is significant internal capture, meaning that the customers patronizing the retail galleries and the showrooms will also patronize the restaurant and vice versa. So the theory is that by imposing separate parking standards for each of these would be somewhat onerous and would require over-parking the site. So while the TCC sort of understands and understood that premise, uh, part of the problem that we had was we didn't feel we had a good base of comparison. As most of RH's existing facilities are in more urban settings and its more suburban prototypes were not entirely compatible. So there was a concern on behalf of the TCC that there might not be sufficient parking onsite, particularly during peak periods and particularly if the project is successful, which I would assume everyone would like it to be successful, at least those who are in favor of. So the result, right, would be that customers potentially looking to park, if there was not a overflow supply, would potentially look to park on neighborhood streets, which is the last thing that the TCC wanted. So what we did is we added a safeguard within the redevelopment plan. We basically required the developer to provide, um, onsite the roughly 115 to 120 spaces they believe would be adequate. But we've additionally required the developer to provide half again, 50% again, the number of spaces off-site at a location within 500 feet of the property and within one of the surrounding non-residential, uh, districts. Uh, and they would be for peak periods of demand only, which we basically defined as from 6:00 PM Friday through 10:00 PM on, uh, Sunday. And again, the intent would be for these spaces to be used for overflow parking mainly for either employees of the facility or, uh, as part of valet parking should it be needed. We've also put in the plan a post-occupancy monitoring, uh, mechanism so that the redeveloper is required to conduct post-construction parking analysis, or what we're referring to as a parking audit. And it has to be submitted to the planning board. And that study will consider the utilization of both on and off-site parking. And there are a number of specifications as to when those counts should be. I'm not going to get into those details. But what I will say is the counts will, are required to be conducted beginning six months after the opening of the facility and shall occur during the course of the ensuing six months to get a real good supply of how this facility is operating and to do it beyond the initial startup period. And based on those study findings, the amount and the timeframes associated with the required off-street parking may be reduced to the extent such off-street parking remains unused during that post-occupancy monitoring. However, any such reduction is subject to the planning board approval. The redeveloper has to go back to the planning board in order to basically get that reduction and provide the proofs necessary. And on the other hand, if the parking audit reveals that the off-site parking is at capacity during this post-occupancy monitoring period, then the redevelopers shall address this with the planning board and the redevelopers and the planning board have to explore the means by which additional off-street, off-site parking uh, may be, uh, provided. So, uh, building design, there are a, a number of standards, uh, detailed standards which are intended to, uh, number one, protect the historic integrity of the abbey and also to ensure that the new construction, the materials treatment and the overall design of a quality that is worthy of the abbey. You see before you a, uh, basically a, uh, rendered elevation of the front showing the existing abbey, the one-story and two-story, uh, sections. Our design standards cover the massing, they cover the distribution of the new wings. There are standards with regard to the building articulation, both horizontally and vertically. There are standards with regard to, uh, fenestration. There are standards with regard to architectural style. And there are a series of standards, uh, basically outlining the specific materials that are required as part of the, uh, new construction. The plan includes a landscaping, uh, section. Uh, it begins with a directive that reasonable efforts be made to preserve existing mature trees on the site. And that's really done in order to maintain the state aesthetic of the site. There are standards with regard to buffer plantings, both street buffer plantings and landscaping and internal side and rear lot buffer landscaping. There are standards with regard to the outdoor patio furnishings and the related plantings. A number of specifications with the intent being to create an inviting and attractive space uh, with, uh, varied sensory benefits on a year-round basis. There are, uh, also a series of specifications regarding plant selection and maintenance in the redevelopment plan, as well as in relation to, uh, fences and walls, which would be intended to create again an estate feeling and sense of enclosure on the site. And then lastly, there are certain provisions for signage. There's a provision for a single facade sign, uh, up to four small, uh, plaque signs near the entry and a monument sign along Madison Avenue. I will say that all the signs are limited in size and none are permitted to be, uh, internally illuminated. The remainder of the plan is mostly what I'll characterize as boilerplate sections, which are necessary to comport with the requirements that are set forth in the local redevelopment and housing law. So there's a, uh, section or a chapter that describes the plan's relationship to, uh, the, uh, the master plans of adjacent municipalities, the county master plan and the, uh, state, uh, development and redevelopment plan. There is a chapter, uh, which is on the, uh, PowerPoint before you that addresses redevelopment actions that are permitted. And I think most noteworthy here is that no property acquisition on the part of the township is required to implement the plan and no relocation is required, uh, also in order to, uh, implement the, uh, implement the plan. There's a chapter on general, uh, provisions. Uh, and clearly, uh, the applicant has to, if this redevelopment plan is adopted, have to go before the planning board for site plan review, just like any other, uh, applicant proposing a development that would trigger the site plan approval process. There are provisions for deviation requests, basically variances. Uh, and importantly, uh, any changes to the uses that are permitted in the plan or any changes that would require a de-variance in accordance with the municipal land use statute, they are only permitted, uh, by an amendment of the redevelopment plan on the part of the township committee. There's no other way that a redeveloper can basically get around those changes without requesting an amendment uh, to the redevelopment plan, to the township committee. And then lastly, there is a procedure for amending the, uh, approved plan. So, uh, and that pretty much takes us through the document. Uh, Mayor, I think that provides a, uh, some background information and a summary of the plan specifics. I think at this time, I'd be happy to address any questions that the township committee, uh, may have. Uh, I would also just point out that, uh, with me this evening is Jim Slate, the township engineer, uh, who is also a member of the TCC and participated in all the discussions and the iteration of the, uh, plans. We're both happy to answer questions and also, as you know, Liz Laney, my business partner is with us and is helping out. And she also has a background in historic preservation. So with that, Mayor, I'd be happy to entertain questions.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Uh, we are going to take a five-minute break to, uh, address the situation we have with the video outdoors. So we will reconvene at seven o'clock and when we pick up, we'll start with those questions by the TC members to, um, Mr. Phillips and Mr. Slate. Okay? Thank you. Okay, are we ready to pick up? I have it on my computer.
You're, you're on.
Okay, we're ready?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna start tonight's meeting. I'm hoping that everyone outside can both see and hear what's going on. I know there was a problem with the video outdoors and the people who were outside were unable to see Mr. Phillips' presentation. So we distributed a, a scan, a piece of paper with the scan on it and uh, members of the public who are outside who got that can scan that and that will take you to a visual of Mr. Phillips' presentation. So it's not ideal, but it is a little bit of a fix, uh, given that people were unable to see his presentation while he was giving it. So it is my understanding that there is video outdoors. It's apparently a little bit hard to see because of the, uh, it's light outside. So hopefully the audio is working well. And, um, we are going to pick up where we left off, um, at this point in the meeting. So I want to thank Mr. Phillips for your presentation. And at this point in the meeting, we were going to pick up with questions from the township committee members. Uh, I will start and then anyone else who has questions can feel free to chime in. So, um, in my conversations with residents, Mr. Phillips, a, a big, um, idea that has come out to me is that there's confusion in the public between, uh, the difference between a redevelopment plan and a site plan. And a lot of the questions that I've heard come up, it's my understanding are actually would be addressed at the site plan level. And, and people, um, seem to, there seems to be a, a, a widespread notion out there. I've heard it repeated many times, um, that if the redevelopment plan is passed, the process is over and we cannot have a say or request any changes later. And I'm wondering if you can address that, um, that comment given, uh, and, and help people to understand the difference between the redevelopment plan and the site plan.
Sure. So the redevelopment plan, as I mentioned, Mayor, uh, basically outlines, provides a framework and parameters for the redevelopment of the property. And that is everything from, as I mentioned, building design to setbacks, to, uh, buffers, to the parking requirements and so forth. And it is indeed a lot more detailed than when you typically find within a conventional zone and that, uh, those standards for that conventional zone. But clearly, at this stage of the game, the, the concepts that are included in the redevelopment plan and that have been shared with the TCC are just that. They're concepts. The site has not been fully engineered. There's issues that the ultimate developer will have to deal with in terms of stormwater and so forth and layout and engineering. So what we have before you is an illustrative concept of what basically can be done on the site with certain parameters that attempted to mirror that concept. Obviously, the planning board basically has significant review powers during the site plan approval process. Let me just give you an example. So one of the things in the redevelopment plan is even though we establish, for example, parking setbacks from adjacent property lines and even though we kind of know what the minimum distance is to provide a buffer to an adjacent lot line, what we have not done is we have not, we provided some guidance, but we haven't basically provided the detailed specifications as to what should or shouldn't be within that buffer. And part of the reason for that is that the planning board, when it considers the detailed plans, basically at a public hearing is going to hear from in terms of what may be a suitable buffer or not in terms of plantings, fences, walls, what have you, is going to hear from the redeveloper. It's going to hear from its own professionals and basically it's perhaps most importantly, it's going to hear from the immediately adjacent neighbors. And typically what happens with the issue of the buffer is, is that it ultimately gets worked out during site plan review. And ultimately, you may have some combination of vegetative plantings, a fence or a wall um, and the specifications in terms of the heights of the trees. Um, so we kind of left that open basically at the purview of the planning board when the developer makes an application and also gives the public the ability to weigh in on and participate in that process to see ultimately what the details and specification of that buffer are. And I've just used that, Mayor, as sort of an example of how much guidance you get from the redevelopment plan and then what issues get hammered out at site plan. Let me give you another example. So it's very clear that the redevelopment plan says there's no left-hand turns out of the site onto Canfield Road. Whether you have one entrance, two entrances, you can't go left to egress the site into the residential neighborhood. There are a number of ways basically to enforce that, right? And one of the ways is through sort of a physical manifestation of that driveway in order to basically make it that cars, unless they're going to jump over curbs or do something illegal, are forced to go outright. That's an issue that's best dealt with at the site plan stage when the developer basically has detailed plans and has done that detailed engineering and is before the planning board. But that guidance comes out of the redevelopment plan because we at the TCC believe that it was a threshold issue to afford adequate protection to the neighbors on Canfield Road. So those are just two examples of sort of what gets addressed in greater detail. So, those are just two examples of sort of what gets addressed in greater detail at site plan, and why, as opposed to what's in a redevelopment plan, and I hope that gives you a sufficient answer to your question.
That helps. Just a further, to push on that a little further, if individual residents wanted to, it's my understanding that representatives from RH are willing to speak with individual residents, and if individual residents wanted to take advantage of that opportunity, they could, I assume. But my, my question would be, what would the outcome there be? Would that be just an informal agreement, or would that be something that's built into, you know, it's referenced in some way in the redevelopment plan, or just?
Right, so, there's certainly not, so, if, if, let's assume the plan was adopted for argument's sake. There's nothing, and the, and the redeveloper was preparing site plans to go to the planning board as part of the site plan approval process. There's nothing that would prevent the redeveloper, and often, I've seen developers do this, from basically reaching out to the immediately abutting neighbors who are most affected, and who most require the protections afforded by buffering, and basically suggest, look, we have a space here, we can do a lot of things, what, what is it that you prefer? And they can do this, nothing preventing them from doing that informally. Obviously, you have to go to the planning board where the process takes place, and obviously, the planning board is gonna make the final call, but as you know, I think in, in the real world, the planning board is gonna be concerned with what the neighbors think, and they could basically come to some kind of agreement before the hearing, and present it, that they're in agreement to the board, again, it's the board's decision. Or, if they choose not to basically meet and reach out to the neighbors, what otherwise happens is that the, the immediately adjacent neighbors will appear at the public hearing at site plan, and make their voice heard to both the redeveloper and the board, and say, you know, I think this buffer is great, I think it needs additional plantings, I think it's inadequate, and all these things kind of get worked out at the time of site plan approval.
Okay, thank you. As we go through tonight's hearing, and also next week's, I'm imagining that certain concerns will come up, certain options for addressing those concerns may come up, and any modifications that we agreed to as part of the public hearing could be added to the existing redevelopment plan that we're considering. Is that correct, Mr. Phillips?
Well, you, I mean, you, you have a redevelopment plan before you this evening that you're holding a public hearing on. If you decide after that hearing that the, there needs to be some changes, or some additions or subtractions from the redevelopment plan, then ultimately, if those changes rise to the level of not being sort of minor in nature, that they're substantive in nature, then what would have to happen is, is that the redevelopment plan would have to go back to a first reading. And then it would go through the same process, it would have to go to the planning board based on the redevelopment statute on referral, and then it would come back to you. The, the only other food for thought, and just, I'm gonna throw that out for, for consideration, is that there is the possibility that, you know, some of the maybe details in terms of, you know, representations that you or others may have heard from the redeveloper, in terms of buffering or whatever, there, there could be the opportunity to roll those into a redevelopment agreement, which again, cannot take place until a redevelopment plan is adopted, it can't formally be entered into. There may be a way to, to do that as well, but those are basically the two options that you have moving forward, if there are additions or changes that you're contemplating to the document that's being considered this evening.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify for the public that a big part of the public hearing process is to hear people's concerns, and have some input from our professionals as to what, and, and perhaps, I don't know, from RH people, I don't know if they're available, but in other words, to have some discussion of the concerns that people have, and the options that are available for addressing them. That's a very important theme of the, of tonight's public hearing, at least from my point of view, so I wanted to clarify that for the public.
Mayor?
Yes?
That's all I told you.
Sure.
Thank you. Just to inform the public, for those of you that don't know, Mayor Wilson and I both sit on the planning board currently, and I, I assume that that's gonna be the arrangement going forward into next year, if this goes into next year. And with our two seats on the planning board, we can take the information that we hear from the public, the assertions that we might get from Restoration Hardware, and you and I can take that to the planning board, and be representative of what we have heard here tonight, and possibly next year, and represent that before the planning board. So, it's not that this, this body is disconnected completely from the planning board, you and I are the connection between this body and the planning board, and we'll take our learnings to that other body when the time comes.
Yes, for sure. Okay, I have one other question, it's, it's not a big broad question, it's more of a specific question. On the prohibited use, the plan specifically cites whatever that storage, or whatever it was called, I, I wanted to know, I've had questions from people, and I'm not sure of the answer myself, what is the, what is, what, how about like weddings and events and stuff like that? Are special events permitted use and accessory use as written as part of this plan?
So, there's no express discussion one way or the other, Mayor, with regard to the special events. The only thing that we've indicated in the plan under accessory uses is uses customarily incidental to the principal permitted use. And I guess a determination would have to be made at some point as to whether or not a wedding would be allowed to be held, would fall under that umbrella of an accessory use. So, there's really nothing in the plan that addresses it one way or the other, other than a determination, the municipality would have to make a determination as to whether or not, you know, what, what may be proposed as customarily incidental to the permitted use.
I would be in favor of identifying what potential accessory uses are included as part of this plan. I've seen that come up in other situations where accessory uses that people did not think of turned out to be part.
Yeah, here, here's, the reason it's in there, and we've, we've outlined some of the accessory uses that we kind of know take place on the premises, such as the surface parking, we want to make it clear that valet parking would be allowed in the associated staging areas, but inevitably, it's been my experience that somewhere down the road, some use basically comes forward with something that when you think about it, or due to changed circumstances over time, that it clearly is an accessory use that goes with the principal use, but for some reason, you haven't included it in the plan itself, and that creates use issues, which I don't need to tell you that they get complicated. So, we put in the catch-all, which I just think, in terms of my own planning practice, is the way to go, which is the customarily incidental to account for what you may not have thought of, or changed circumstances over time, but it still gives the municipality the ability to basically make that determination as to what they believe is customarily incidental to the principal use, so that protection still exists.
I would like us to give some thought ahead of time to what some of those customary uses may be, and we don't have to do it right now, and just putting that on the table is something for us to, to think about going forward, and perhaps before the next meeting.
I mean, the, the other thing, Mayor, is those type of, you know, uses and/or limitations are something that could be the subject of the, the detailed redevelopment agreement.
Okay. We'll put that on the list of things to, to reflect on, and possibly add to our plan. Is there anyone else from the township committee who has any questions they would like to ask to Mr. Phillips?
I'd just like to add on to what you just said, also.
Yes, Mr. Grayson, go ahead.
And so, continuing the, the line of questioning that Mayor Wilson just had, given the size of the dining facility, Paul, what can, what types of events could be held in a space that size?
Well.
Is it, is it big enough for a wedding reception?
You know, probably all else being equal, it would appear to be that it's not, doesn't have the size in order to do that, but we all know that, you know, there are different wedding venue scenarios. So, I, I wouldn't go so far as to say that, you know, it, it wouldn't be proposed there, but your point is well taken, that there's, there's not a lot of room, the seating is, is limited, but again, I think that if this is something that, you know, could potentially be handled as part of the redevelopment agreement, one way or the other, and with any limitations associated with that.
Anything else, Mr. Grayson?
I'll, I'll.
Mr. Jarki, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Paul, can you hear Merritt?
Yeah, I can hear you, Mark.
Thanks for your presentation. I have a question pertaining to the, to the redevelopment plan. It's a bit theoretical, but if any background would be appreciated, because I'm trying to factor in all background information, considering outside factors, if theoretically, the township committee were to approve of the ordinance and Restoration Hardware were to start moving forward, what kind of protection does the township have in terms of, and this is kind of my personal experience, should the development go belly under, or they decide to move, actually to change their minds and not build it after they started moving forward with the plan? This has happened during the recession in Norris Township, where residents stared at a pile of dirt for a number of years. So, curious what ways we can protect our residents on that side of town, should the economic environment not be no longer suitable for this project?
So, Mark, it's a, it's a very good question, and I'm only gonna kind of take it as far as my own knowledge, because I am involved sort of tangentially with this, but these are the kinds of things that typically would go into the redevelopment agreement between the township and the developer, and that redevelopment agreement is typically drafted by council, and that redevelopment, those redevelopment agreements would typically provide protections in terms of the required performance standards, in terms of construction and so forth, and phasing and dates, in terms of the construction, and there will also potentially be remedies in that agreement. So, I've kind of given you a preview, which is sort of based on how far my experience and knowledge takes it, but I have reviewed many redevelopment agreements, and these are the kind of things that if you do decide to move forward with the redevelopment plan and enter into a redevelopment agreement, you're gonna need good legal protections in that agreement to address just the kinds of things that you've cited.
Merritt, are we doing one at a time, or?
Go ahead.
Thank you. My next question, and you brought up phasing, what sort of phasing would, would we have with this project specifically as it pertains to the privacy of the immediate residents there?
So, not to hedge again, Mark, but this is absolutely spot on, the kinds of things that go into the redevelopment agreement, in terms of the phasing of construction, and the, when certain portions of the approved site improvements take place. So, there may be the ability to require a developer to put in a certain amount, or all of the buffering and landscaping prior to certain construction, these are all things that are negotiated, again, as part of the redevelopment agreement, but again, your point is well taken, and, and these kinds of things can be done to basically provide, again, as much protection to adjacent residents as possible.
I have a whole list of questions, but I'll refer to another member of the committee.
Okay.
Well, Mark, if I could, Mayor, if I could just add on to what Mark just said.
Okay, Mr. Grayson's gonna add on to that, and then we're going to see if Mr. Arvanes and Mr. Rankuso would like, have questions.
So, so what just Mr. Jarki just referred to, in, in terms of staging or phasing of the construction to, to shield the residents, again, I'll, I'll state again that Mayor Wilson and I are both on the planning board, ensuring a minimal, it's not, there is gonna be an impact to neighbors, I doubt, and we'll be discussing that tonight, but to minimize the construction impacts on the neighbors is really, really important to me, along with the ongoing impacts, you know, putting up good buffering, but it is my intention when we are on the planning board to make sure that that is part of any kind of agreement, that the neighbors are shielded from impacts of construction. There's, there's no way they can construct without having a barrier shielding the residents, I wouldn't, I wouldn't stand for that.
Correct.
I appreciate that, thank you.
We wouldn't, and I don't, the planning board wouldn't.
I can last on the planning board, will you?
No. Okay.
Mayor Wilson, it's Peter, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, I have a couple of thoughts. I'd just like to say to Paul, what an excellent job he's done, because even in his reiteration, he answered the four questions I had, but I think most of the residents' problem from, from the beginning were that everybody felt that if we passed this ordinance, that there would be no chance to change it, and I think that everybody has started to understand. But could you just explain a little bit more to them, to us, to myself, the difference between substantive and non-substantive changes?
Sure. So, the, the redevelopment plan, as you know, Peter, is 40 pages long, and has a lot of standards, everything from the uses allowed, to the, to the setbacks, to the parking requirement. So, if there are any changes to the document, for example, that the township committee would want to roll into the redevelopment plan, that would rise to the level that we, we kind of refer to it as substantive, by way of example, if we somehow or another change the permitted uses, that would clearly be, you know, that would clearly be substantive. If we made a substantive change to any of the building or parking setbacks, that, in my opinion, would rise to being a substantive change. If we did something like, oh, we changed our minds, we would now want to have outdoor dining in the outdoor inventory space, that would rise to a substantive change. So, anything along those lines basically would, if it's going to be rolled into the redevelopment plan, in, in my opinion, would basically put us back to a revisions to the plan, which would mean a first reading, and the process would start over.
Thank you, sir. Second question, traffic on Canfield, and Mr. Quinn may have a better answer to this than any, any of us, can we impose no parking on both sides of the street during, not even during when they're open, but, you know, on a permanent basis?
You want me to take that one?
Yeah.
Normally, what we do with parking is, we also work with the residents, yes, the township could prohibit parking there through in ordinance, what we've done with them is work with our police department, our fire department, that kind of thing, but often we will survey the neighbors, and if the neighbors are in support of it, we can put in no parking, the township can put in no parking restrictions there, it can either be permanent or by certain hours, we have both in our municipal ordinances, it can be one side of the street compared to the other side of the street, so there are a number of options, but it would certainly be something that we would work with the residents on Canfield, because they would be impacted on it, guests or visitors, parties, that kind of thing, could impact them for that, so, but we could certainly, you know, through the police department, through a survey to the residents, with several different options. to the residents, with several different options for that.
Thank you, sir. And my third question is, it's not my question, actually Paul answered it, but constructing the barriers coming out to prohibit left-hand turns by having some sort of a, an impertinence, like a sidewalk there, I think is just a wonderful idea. It just, it just makes this more palatable, it would, would to me, if I lived there. And the other thing is, I think it's very important, and you mentioned it before, that we need the residents' input as to the buffers, the vegetative, the fence, the walls, as to what goes on there. I think it could be very, very helpful to us in our thinking process. Okay, and that's all I have for now, but Mr. Phillips, again, a great presentation and a great put of a situation together for us, thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Manqueso. Mr. Arvanes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Phillips, I'd like to reiterate what has been mentioned before, and to thank you for all of the efforts that you and your team has put, put into this, to get it to this point. I didn't get a chance earlier to mention, to mention that, you know, I, I didn't think that, that, as we saw, that we had some glitches, and hopefully it's, you know, they're all resolved, and the residents that are participating are getting the information and hearing everything that they need to hear, because I was not in favor of us moving forward with such a hybrid, but here we are, though, and we have to do our job. So I thank everybody for all their efforts, from the committee to Tim Quinn and everyone else that put their efforts into trying to make sure that this went as seamless as possible. With regard to the, some of the comments that I've heard, to me, it seems like, based on some comments, that some, that some are in favor of this moving forward and for it to be restoration hardware coming in some form. Obviously, all of us care about making sure that everything is done in the best interest of our township, so I'm not discounting that at all from any of the members on the committee. But if we're not interested in having such an entity come into our township, and in the beginning, when I first heard this project coming in, I was in favor of moving forward with something along the lines of a restoration hardware coming into Morris Township. The more I think about it, and the more I thought about it, and the more I rode past it, whether it was with my bicycle, walking, or driving through the neighborhood, and sitting on the property, me personally, I don't think that this is an appropriate fit for our municipality, so I just want to put that on the record, but here we are, and barring any unexpected comments that I hear to change my mind, as of this moment, I don't think that this is an appropriate use for the property, because of the amount of traffic that it'll bring into our township, and also the character of that whole area will, will change. And some or many can argue the traffic situation, restoration hardware has done their homework, they wouldn't be putting something there if it wasn't going to be creating traffic to get people to come there to sell their furniture and their other goods. So if this is something that we all agree, the majority of us agree, that it's not an appropriate fit, we can stop it here and stop the whole redevelopment plan, instead of it going to the planning board and having the planning board then fine tune it in such a way so that some people aren't upset with the fact that restoration hardware is being put on this property. The other thing that I look into, that I looked into was the pilot money that would be coming into our township. You know, we should not be blinded by that, because as we see many, many businesses are going out of business or filing for bankruptcy, so it does not mean, and there's no guarantee, that for the next 30 years or 25 years, the restoration hardware will be there to pay the pilot money that we're anticipating. So we can't anticipate that all of that money will be coming, that all of it will be coming to us, because at any given time, if restoration hardware was to go out of business or decide to move somewhere else, then the pilot money stops coming in. Not to mention that by going the pilot avenue, we're shortchanging our school system, and our Board of Education and our schools are struggling for funds at this time to help get the schools in such a place so that it's a healthy environment for not only the children, but the teachers and everyone else that works for the schools. So for those reasons, those are some of the other reasons why I don't think it's appropriate, and, and Mr. Phillips, or if there's someone else that can answer the question on the, on the pilot money coming in, is it true or not true that if restoration hardware five or 10 or 15 years from now says, you know, we don't want to be here anymore, does the pilot money still need to be paid, or does it stop?
So, John, I'll just jump in on the pilot money, and, and I have not, and again, usually there's a, a special redevelopment council involved with experience in doing the pilots. I have not participated in any discussions with regard to a pilot here, so I, I can't answer your specific question about what happens under that theoretical. The, the only thing that I will say is that the pilot, the municipal is not required, as you know, to enter into the pilot, it's, it's, they, they do it voluntarily, they're not required to do so, but beyond that, in terms of the specifics, I, I've not participated in that, so I can't address it.
As far as any informal analysis of the type of traffic volume that would be coming in and out of that property, have we, anything along those lines, or is that something?
Yeah, so, I mean, I, look, I'm, I'm not going to try and change your mind, John, but I, I would like to just kind of address some of the things that you raised, because I think they're, they're legitimate concerns. And I think first I'd like to address the issue of the traffic. And yes, a detailed traffic study that would be required at Site Plan has not been done yet, but one of the things that the TCC asked to be done as part of the redevelopment plan was basically to get a confirmation in terms of the issues of, of traffic to and from the property. So we had asked the township's traffic engineer, Joe Fissinger, to do a very simple sort of origin and destination study, which traffic engineers do, and they do something called a gravity model, and they look at generally where people are going to come from to the site, and they, then they look at the surrounding roadway network to determine, you know, where the people are likely to, you know, basically come to the site, what roads they would take. And Joe's analysis indicated that the primarily, the traffic to and from the site is going to come from either end on Madison Avenue, and also basically going up to Punch Bowl Road. Now, the one thing that I will say is, and, and as part of my due diligence, I'm telling you, I drove all the roads, and the one thing that I will say is that I'm cognizant that there is another direction where traffic can come to and from this site potentially, and that's from Woodland. And, you know, one of the things that I wanted, and, and we know that there's a, an interstate exit very close, so one of the things that I did was I looked at the roadway network, I drove those roads. I put my GPS on when I drove those roads, and basically coming from the interstate, as you could expect, because of the circuitous access, if you try and go directly to the site from Canfield or Crescent, it's not the most convenient way to do that, unless you're local, you kind of don't know it. But we all rely on GPS, and all I can tell you is, is that when I punched in my GPS, when I was coming from the interstate, it took me up Old Glen Road, and when I came from sort of Chatham Township the other way, it took me either on, I think it's Treadwell, which is in Chatham, or Kitchell, because those are, are direct shots to get to Madison Avenue. So from a traffic standpoint, with the no lefts particularly in place out of Canfield, I don't think you're going to see a lot of traffic coming or going to the site utilizing local streets. The, the only other thing I want to respond to, and perhaps just John asked you to think about, is in, in terms of your comments about RH not being a good fit or too intense, you know, when, when the, when the planning board went through the master plan reexamination in 2017, and when the planning board conducted the area need study in 2018, we sort of had the benefit of the history of the, the recent history of the property, since it was acquired by the current owner back in 2008. And we were very familiar at the time we did the area need study of all the efforts that were made to try and find a user for the abbey. And I think the, the bottom line is, is that you're dealing with a building that needs work, it needs a capital influx, and you have to find sort of an economic driver to be able to have the wherewithal to preserve that building as part of whatever's going to be developed on the site, assuming you want to see it preserved, which I think all else being equal, I can't imagine anyone, all else being equal, would like to see that preserved. But be that as it may, what we're, and, and the OSGU zoning is just not tenable, long-range on that site, it's, it's meant for government, institutional uses, churches, and you have to find some use for that particular site. And what concerns me and the TCC is we're seeing, coming before the TCC on development applications, what we're seeing on Madison Avenue, and you, you well know, that the banks are being shut down, and the new applications are either one or two things, they're either multifamily housing with an affordable component at relatively high densities, and there, they are, we've seen a couple of convenience stores with gas, and now there's, there's one with a fast food with a drive-through, and in my opinion, in the TCC's opinion, these are not appropriate for this site, for, for a host of reasons. So I, I think that as you look at this, just consider if not this, you know, because I don't think you can look at it in a vacuum, what, what are we going to do here that not only, you know, stabilizes Madison Avenue, but also is good for the residents? I know that that's a tough choice and a tough decision, but that's kind of the way that, that we as a township have been looking at this site, and probably should continue to do that in the future. So I've talked too much, John, but I just want you to understand the TCC's perspective on this.
And I, and I respect the work that goes into it, and the questioning, and, and the visions, and, and all of that, so I'm not, I'm not discounting any of the work that was put into it, it's just my, my thought and my opinion, you know, I believe the property's about five acres, so even worst-case scenario of somebody, because there's, there's the threat that we might get condos, so if you do six to an acre, you're going to get 30 units, you're going to get maybe 60 cars, not hundreds of cars a day. So I'm not saying that that's the appropriate thing to do either, but, and I wasn't even thinking about the traffic on, on, on the side streets that you mentioned before, so that, that makes it even worse for me. On top of it, you know, we, we've complained in the past about surrounding communities, building and adding too much traffic on our corridors to try to get in and out of 24 and, and whatnot, you know, we're now, by putting something this intense, we're adding to that problem, too. And so we should not then be throwing stones at others, because then we're doing the same thing that they're doing. I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arvanes. I have one hypothetical for you, Mr. Arvanes, just hypothetically, if given the choice, would you prefer something along the lines of this proposal or, or condos? Just, that's a pure hypothetical.
Right now, I can just answer based on what I see going there, and so what I see going there, I do, I do not think it's the right thing for our township.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Jorkey, did you have more questions?
Mayor, I'd prefer to move on, so we can have as much time for our residents to ask questions.
Okay, thank you.
I have several questions.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Yes.
So, I guess building off of what Mr. Arvanes was just talking about, about generation, one thing you didn't discuss in your report is the surrounding sites, and so there are two sites, two sides are residential, but two sides are commercial, if you look across Madison Avenue, at the medical building and next door at Crimmer Foster, correct? And at Catty Corner.
I actually did, I actually did discuss that when I was describing the site context, Jeff.
And, and, okay, and the buildings, and the building Catty Corner across, I mean, the, the point is that, that intersection already generates a lot of daily traffic from people coming and going to office buildings. What this site might bring is, I think, just a percentage additional to what already exists on a day-to-day basis at that intersection with, with three other commercial buildings there, you know, so the additive impact, I'm not sure is, is that great when you look at it, if you, if you look, you get 60 cars for condos or 120 cars for the restoration hardware, on top of what existing is, I think the percentage increase, and again, we'll probably get into this at the planning board, probably isn't that significant, but I just want to make.
Well, the, the other thing, Jeff, is as you well know, there's a new traffic light that just went in.
Yeah.
To that intersection, and the, the effect of that light is to basically provide gaps in the flow of traffic, so that there's the ability to enter and exit the site.
So I did have another, a couple of questions. The height of the, you discussed the height of the buildings, the height of the existing abbey building is, is how big? Do you know at its highest point?
I have that somewhere, and I'll have to look it up, I don't have it right in front of me, but.
So do you know, in, in your discussions at the TCC, and I'm like, did Paul give the description of what TCC stands for and what it does? So I, I think, Paul, after asking my question, you should first discuss, just to let the public understand what TCC is, and what it does, and what its function is, and who sits on it. But in, in your discussions with the TCC, did you discuss the height of the abbey building versus height of other structures, to ensure that the, the abbey building isn't dwarfed by any other, the other buildings?
Oh, we were very cognizant, and I'll have to look up, I don't have it in front of me, and maybe Jim, you have it while I'm talking, but the, we were very cognizant that in terms of the protection of the historic qualities of the abbey, is that we wanted to have no more than two stories, and if you notice that we did this purposefully, is that the immediate connection and the center connection is one story, so that you can continue from a visual perspective to have the abbey highlighted, and that the only two-story section would be at the far other end of that new center one-story wing. That was done on, that was done on purpose. I'm trying to figure out if I could get the height of the abbey building. I just got an email or a text that said ground to parapet 33 feet.
And I was going to say, you know, less than 35 and 33 is bringing about.
Roughly 33, Jeff.
Very good. You also noted in your presentation that structures would be connected to the historic building, or other structures would be connected to the historic structure, and thus create one single building?
Yes.
And I was wondering, what's the significance of the requirement for a single building versus disconnected buildings? What, what was the objective in connecting everything together? I know easily, easier to walk, but is there any significance to having one single quote-unquote building?
So again, in terms, we, we basically wanted to have, in terms of the expansion of the abbey, we didn't want to have separate buildings, we wanted it to basically be a continuous building, and the other thing is, we did not want the, and some of the iterations of the original design materials treatment, we didn't want to try and mimic it in terms of the design, the materials, the colors, because that, we thought, would actually detract from the historic significance, significance and the aesthetics. But in addition to the connections, which obviously makes sense from an operational flow, we did, we did not want there to be a bunch of separate buildings, it just didn't make sense to us in terms of being as honest and true to the abbey as, as we could.
And then just one last question, Mayor, if I could.
Sure.
With regard to staging, and I think you're going to tell me this is going to be a planning board issue, but I'll, I'll ask it. Preserving the abbey is one of the things that's, you know, driving me to, you know, strong. Preserving the abbey is one of the things that's, you know, driving me to strongly consider this plan. And it's historic structure. We're going to hear from the historic preservation committee shortly. This is our opportunity to possibly save that building if we have agreed to this plan. I want to make sure that during construction, that we ensure that the historic building is stabilized appropriately. I know that there's some cracks in parapets and things like that. Is that appropriate for us to discuss now to stage the construction so that the historic building can be stabilized appropriately before the land around it is disturbed? To ensure its long-term stability?
So the short answer is, it's, that is something that would not be typically found or included in the redevelopment and redevelopment plan itself, notwithstanding the fact that it's a legitimate issue and concern moving forward. But again, these are the kinds of things that would be part of the redevelopment agreement between the municipality and the redeveloper. And also, if there's anything that would not be included, that this also, as you know, Jeff, could be taken up at the time of site plan if you felt that there was something that was important to protect the public interest that wasn't included in the redevelopment agreement. And just in answer to your earlier question, the TCC, for the benefit of the public, stands for Technical Coordinating Committee. And it's basically made up of the township professionals, which would include, in addition to myself, Jim Slate as the township engineer, and also the planning board attorney, Steve Warner, and the zoning board attorney, Rich Aller. And the TCC basically reviews development applications that come before the township, whether they're going to the planning board or zoning board. We also review conceptual presentations that are made by developers. The TCC basically provides a report in terms of its meetings, which are used in the ensuing site plan approval process. And often, the administration through Tim asks the TCC to get involved in particular projects or, you know, land use issues and so forth. And this would be an example, Jeff, of one in terms of the, of being put in charge with working on and drafting the redevelopment plan.
Okay, thanks for that explanation. I hope the public is now understanding of what the TCC's role is. Just one last comment, as I know that there are representatives of Restoration Hardware listening into the call right now. So if they could, in their remarks at the very end, may possibly address stabilization of the historic structure, I would appreciate that. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Grisso. Okay, unless anyone else from the township committee has any further questions or comments, I guess we'll move on. Before, I would like to call up Mr. Peter Steck in just a moment. I know there was a request by residents to know how many attendees we have. And so just a quick update on that. We have 13 panelists, which includes our professionals and members of the township committee, and we have 75 attendees. And it was my understanding that Mr. Daly, at some point in the meeting, was going to, perhaps when we do our break, we can put a list of the people who are attending via Zoom. We had talked about doing that, and perhaps we will when we do take a break, which is not going to be right now, by the way.
It would require a number of screenshots to do that.
Okay, all right, so perhaps we won't then. Anyway, there are 75 attendees to answer at least one of the questions I received from residents. At this point, we are turning our meeting to public comment. And the first person that's going to speak during the public comment of tonight's public hearing is Mr. Peter Steck. Is the resident going to come in?
No.
No, okay. So Mr. Steck is here with us in the meeting room. He's a professional planner. And he is going to address some of the objections that some of our residents have brought up. And at this point, Mr. Steck is at the podium. I'd like to welcome you. And please go ahead and share your report.
Thank you. Again, my name is Peter Steck, and I'm a planning consultant from Maplewood. And I was initially contacted by Remo Mchudo, who lives in the neighborhood. And he introduced me to some of the other residents. And he's been one of the primary contacts I have in terms of what he had asked me to do. And basically, I was asked to review the redevelopment plan and what I know about the process, and to offer some comments from the neighborhood's point of view. So there are a number of property owners obviously interested. They're not necessarily uniform in all their observations. But my approach was to list as many concerns as I thought a planner could come up with. And so here we go. First of all, I want to, and I'm going to review a memo that I put together that's dated August 22nd this year, which I believe the elected officials have and staff members have. First of all, as Mr. Phil mentioned, this process started with pretty much communication with the potential redeveloper and the municipality in absent any kind of public hearing. And at that first technical coordinating committee meeting, the potential redeveloper was advised that this use, meaning a restaurant or furnishings or retail outlet, were not permitted in the zone. And so there were alternatives looked at. If this was to move forward, there could be a zone change. There could be a variance before the Board of Adjustment, or there could be a redevelopment plan. And as this bombed its way through the municipality, it elected to have a redevelopment plan. I'm going to return to this in a minute because one of the procedural requirements is for you to say, oh, this is consistent with your master plan. And it alerted me early on when it was, when the obvious thing was stated, that this use is not permitted under the current zoning. The redevelopment plan is unusual. And it's both a plan, and I guess you would say a mini zoning ordinance that applies just to this one piece of property. And you are entitled, through a redevelopment plan, to have additional controls that you wouldn't normally have. It is restricted, and you never have an application to the Board of Adjustment as Mr... Well, in this case, it's interesting that it's an overlay plan. So you're preserving the underlying zoning, which means regardless of the plan, someone could apply to the Board of Adjustment for variance under the current zoning. Some redevelopment plans eliminate the current zoning and replace it. Some are overlays. One of the requirements in the local redevelopment and housing law, so we have the municipal land use law that governs traditional zoning, and we have a separate state law that governs redevelopment. One of the requirements is that within the redevelopment plan, the conclusion be stated about whether or not this plan is substantially consistent with your master plan. The plan is currently drafted, says that it is not inconsistent, which I assume means it's consistent. I think that that is not an accurate reading of your master plan. Your master plan said that this should be predominantly an office zone. A corner of it is still in the R15 single-family zone. Recognizing that any kind of restaurant or retail use is not consistent with that, I don't see how anyone reasonably can conclude that this is consistent with your 1994 master plan. So in my opinion, that's a fundamental defect in the plan. And again, this is not, you have the ability to change it in the future, but unlike other zoning approaches, you have to state the reason in the plan why you're still doing it despite that inconsistency. So that's something that, in my opinion, is a mistake in the plan. One of the fundamental problems, which is a procedural problem, well, first of all, I want to say that the municipality has obviously followed the law, that the redevelopment law is peculiar in that when you are doing hearings, technically, you only notify the property owner in the area of redevelopment. You don't notify people within 200 feet. But I know the municipality now is further than that, but I think is laudable. And obviously, the participation this evening is evidence of a wider community interest in this. One of the things that the plan does, which is unusual, it says you only have to have 2/3 of the parking required on-site, and you could have parking across the street in the office zone as kind of a safety valve, if you would. The problem with that is that when you take parking for Restoration Hardware and you have it on the Restoration Hardware site, that's fine. It's an accessory use. But when you take that same parking and you put it across the street, it becomes a principal use, and that zone across the street doesn't permit parking as a principal use. So if you adopt this plan as is, and let's say that the developer wants to put some of its required parking, the third of it, across the street, in my opinion, they would have to go to the Board of Adjustment for a variance. So, and that's because the area across the street is not within the redevelopment plan. It's not controlled by that plan. I'm going to run through some short-form observations, and I'll try to keep them as simple as possible. And then I want to make a few end comments about the proceedings so far and what has come out in the discussions. First of all, it's clear that this redevelopment plan, in one sense, was easy to draft because there was already a concept plan presumably prepared by Restoration Hardware. So rather than working to the blank slate, the drafters already knew how much of the building might be demolished. They knew approximately how much parking they wanted to have on the site. And that makes it easy to draft something like this. And it's not unusual that that happens. But it does, the problem is, is that the standards of the plan, while clearly they were manipulated over time based on the judgment of the professionals, they're really geared to provide what the developer wanted. One exception was there was one lot in the rear that apparently was studied to see if it was in need of redevelopment, and that was rejected. But the answer is, the plan is drafted so that the developer, the redevelopment plan is drafted so the developer can accommodate what it wants to do. One of the observations is, it certainly is a public purpose to have some historic preservation of this property. What is happening here, again, it's an economic judgment, and I don't know if there are other users, but the answer is, the new buildings are much larger than the existing building. And it was noted by that the interior of the rear portion of the abbey is not in great shape. Well, historic preservation isn't just dependent on interiors. The outfits, someone walking around the building sees a wonderful building with wonderful architecture around the complete 360 view of it. And indeed, the interior of all this is going to change to a certain degree. But if you look at the, and I did secure part of the historic nomination form, it talked about the building and the grounds and specimens. So when this was originally nominated, it was clear that the freestanding trees were an important part of this site. And so that's something that is, it isn't just the building. It's the presentation of the building to Madison, to Canfield, and the setting that is a wooded setting. The design being proposed by Restoration Hardware is a very peculiar design. If you were to be shown this and not know who the user is, you would wonder who could use this kind of a building. It's got, it's spread out over different pods come out of it. It's larger than the historic building, part of the historic building you turn down. This is designed for the purposes of Restoration Hardware, which I'm sure they're skilled about their development proposal. But things change over time. And right now, this municipality is struggling with how to reuse this building. The comment is, 10 years from now, the retail environment seems to be changing quicker than every 10 years at the moment. But if this use is no longer viable, what do you use the building for then? And while you can say, oh, they have to come back to the board, and they have to amend the redevelopment agreement, the answer is, there's a practicality of what do you use this building in the future since it seems to be peculiarly designed just for this user. And as you know, with any of your office buildings now, the market has changed, and it's difficult to reuse some of these. In my opinion, the concept plan that was presented to the municipality represents overdevelopment of the site. And again, the parking that's shown, and again, it could change, but there's tandem parking, one parking space blocking the other, which says you don't have a lot of room. The parking is being, to a certain degree, left from the, it's not on the front lawn, not on much of the front lawn, which is good from a historic preservation point of view. But it's being put against the most sensitive land uses, which are the abutting homes. And for example, it allows, the redevelopment zone allows 65% impervious coverage. It allows, which is greater than the residential zone. You have a 45% limit. This is a use that is more intensive than office use. And why is that? Largely because it's off-hours. If you live next to an office building, you're generally quiet on the weekends, quiet in the evenings. This is the reverse type of use. This use is going to be booming during the weekends and during the evenings. And that's the time when typically residential areas would deserve a little more quiet. Evidence of redevelopment are the fact that they're more intensive use than I think is comfortable are the need for off-site parking, stacked parking spaces, at least in the concept plan, and the very minimal buffers. Your ordinance says, your ordinance, as expressed in the redevelopment plan, says that the developer is only required to have 10-foot and 15-foot buffers that above the residences. That's not much. And to jump ahead, these are the rules of the game. So if the developer comes in, I will grant you that a future application for site plan, you can require more shrubbery, better spacing. You can always require that, but you can't require the developer to have more than 10 feet because the developer complies with the standard in the ordinance. So that's an important issue. Because right now, in your office zones, if this were to be demolished and built as an office use, the buffer area was supposed to be, I believe, was 10% of the width or depth of the building. So we're talking about 40 feet as a buffer, potentially, if that were redeveloped under current zoning. Here's a use that is more intensive than an office use and only 10 and 15 feet of a buffer. And again, the redeveloper is entitled to. And again, the redeveloper is entitled to rely on that. Now, I'll grant you that during some applications before the planning board, there can be horse trading. You know, I'll let you have this variance, give me something back. But at the end of the day, the developer is entitled to rely on these standards. So if you say, I only want one driveway on Canfield, or no driveways on Canfield, no, 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 the developer can rely on the fact that your redevelopment says, redevelopment plan says you can have two driveways on Canfield. As I mentioned, the historic nomination form talks about specimen trees in part of the site. And what I did is overlay the concept plan. And again, the concept plan may not be the final plan, but it seems to me that is what the regulations were drafted from. A lot of those trees are going to be removed. Yes, some of the front lawn are going to stay. But in the areas that are most sensitive, the abutting residential uses, a lot of those trees are coming down. And in my opinion, that's part of the historic value of this property. You have unusual parking standards in the plan. It suggests to me that although Restoration Hardware may say you don't need all this parking, and again, they haven't tested it out yet. Every market is kind of different. You can have a restaurant with a bad chef, and you can have a restaurant with a good chef. And there's a big difference on the need for parking. But your ordinance is very light on any kind of patio seating. If you pull, if you, if the developer comes in with a maximum number of seats, which if you add the outdoor patio with the interior seats, that's a total of 204 seats. 164 indoors, 40 outdoors. According to the way your ordinance reads, that means 68 parking spaces, a ratio of 0.33 parking spaces per seat. Again, assuming they're both happening at the same time. The standard, published standard, and this can be debated by professionals, but the Institute of Traffic Engineers says that the average demand is 0.47 spaces per seat. And the average means that a lot of them are more tense than that, and a lot, half of them roughly are less than that. That would be the median rather than the average, but that approximates it. Many zoning ordinances are drafted on the 85th percentile, which means there'll still may be a shortage of parking, but you want better assurance that there's not an overflow. And that ratio would be 0.86 parking spaces per seat. So this suggests that the parking required by the redevelopment plan is on the light side. And again, if there may be overflow, there may be people that don't want valet. And now you're talking about potentially imposing parking regulations on the street. Now that gets complicated. Because does that mean if I live on the street, I can't have my guests parking there? It gets somewhat complicated. And typically, you like to have enough parking on the property itself and not rely on people racing across, and in this case, trying to get a use variance. There are obviously safety issues. Canfield is a residential street. People walk, people ride bikes. There are no sidewalks on the side that the abbey's on, and no sidewalks back further from where Crum and Foster is. So it's a, it has a bucolic feel to it. It's not an urban area. And while you could say residential streets should have sidewalks, it putting them in makes it a little more urban, a little less of a bucolic character. And even though it might be technically safer, it might not be desirable for the neighborhood. There are, and there was already discussion of the traffic circulation issues. That is intended to draw kind of from the region, which means people are not going to be familiar with this. Some people may be very comfortable with valet parking. Some people say, I don't want them to touch my car. But you're now flowing off of the property. And again, the abutting streets, Canfield, and on the other side there, public streets, that the public has a right to parking. Now you can start developing this sophisticated situation with no parking times, permits for just residents. It gets complicated, is what I'm saying. And so the impact is not going to be just from the noise, from the weekend activities, but there will be both traffic and parking impacts that may affect the residential area. The one thing about traffic and planning is that technically, when you draft a zoning ordinance, you take traffic into consideration at that time. If someone comes in with a permitted use, and you say, oh, there's too much traffic coming off the interstate, I don't like this use, the answer is, you can't refuse it based on traffic. It was considered when the zoning ordinance was drafted. But this redevelopment plan is both a mini-master plan and a new zoning just for this site. And planning logic is that you consider traffic now. You could say, this also works with drainage. I'll grant you that drainage is something that has regularly happened with, at the time of site plan review. But because this is a sensitive site from a historic preservation point of view, and because there's a preference for above-ground storage, best management practices, you may be losing more trees than you would think. So that's something that needs to be exposed ahead of time. And again, some of this may be resolved at the time of site plan approval, but the developer is entitled to rely on those standards despite the fact that you pause and say, ah, you know, I wish it wasn't this way. There is an issue of the integrity of historic preservation. Yes, part of the building is being demolished. That outside has the elegant architecture that the rest of the building does in the rear. But the nomination form talks about the setting and specimen trees. So that is something that is going to be lost. Not only, it's important for the adjacent property owners because they now have a green space between them and the building, but the answer is, is this development application with only 10-foot buffers to the neighbors, evening and weekend activity, is this too much a price to pay at this time for historic preservation? Everybody wants the building preserved. If someone comes in and says, I want to build a 20-story high-rise office building, you would probably say, uh-uh. You know, that's too much of a hit to take for historic preservation. But people also examine public sources. I know it's not time to talk about public finances. I happen to live at one time at a place in Montclair called Hip Castle, which is now owned by Essex County. But it was a 21-room mansion on the ridgeline of Montclair and Gerona. And it turned out over time, it went into office use. Developers came in and say, look, we'll save the castle, we'll build like a lot of units around it. But eventually, the county picked it up as a valuable cultural resource. Something that needs to be explored. Finally, certainly over time, it maybe changes to this corridor. But right now, this intersection of Canfield and Madison is kind of the end of the commercial active area. And if you go further toward Madison, it's pretty much residential or, you know, well landscaped, you don't get the sense of commercial activity. This will extend the commercial activity further. And again, not just the same theme, the office theme. This is a use that, again, has a retail component, which is not represented in the area. It has a restaurant component, which means into the evening and into the weekends, which is the sensitive time for those who live there. I just want to ask, end up with a couple of comments that I was writing down when conversations were going on before me. And in a redevelopment plan, and there's nothing in the plan about a pilot program. Pilot means payment in lieu of taxes. And what it means essentially is that instead of paying real estate taxes, the municipality negotiates with the developer, and they set up a schedule of payments that could be less than what was normally paid. It could be a percentage of revenues. So if the revenues go down, your pilot program goes down. It is true by state law that 5% of that revenue goes to the county. Zero goes to the Board of Education, and the rest goes into the general revenues of the municipality. And that's become controversial, especially from Boards of Education, that they feel that they're left out, and they are in fact left out of the process. The other aspect of a redevelopment plan is it's true that you can have a redevelopers agreement. And that can talk about phasing and other things. The troublesome part of it is that that's something that's, in a sense, negotiated behind the scenes between the governing body and the developer. It's typically not part of the public hearing process. It's kind of after the fact. And so there has to be a level of trust. And you can't undo what, let's say, the planning board approved in a, in a site plan approval. You can control a lot of things, and you can put protections in it. But the one negative is that that is done outside of the public eye. And so there's an issue of public trust that the governing body follows the theme that the planning board adores. So I think there are some procedural issues, consistency with the 1994 master plan. It's different from the reexamination report. The reexamination report said, we ought to study this property. It didn't say it ought to be a restaurant, didn't say it ought to be a furniture showroom. It said we ought to study it. You can't say, in my opinion, that this plan is consistent with the master plan. I think that just doesn't hold water. There is the issue of off-site parking that, in my opinion, requires a use variance. And that ought to concern the developer too, because that adds a level of risk to it. So I'm not sure this plan is ready for prime time, and I think that was already announced early on, that no decision is going to be made tonight. But I do think that there has to be some reworking of the plan before it is seriously considered. And not to lose sight of the big picture, is this too much a price to pay for this level of preservation? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steck. I appreciate your report. I have read your report twice, have a lot of notes, I have a lot of questions for you. We are running a little later than usual. So what I would like to do is just, I just, I'm going to focus on a couple of questions that I have, and I'm going to identify a couple of questions that I would like Mr. Phillips to answer when he sort of sums up at the end of the meeting. And between now and our next meeting, I want to listen to your testimony because I think you added some things tonight that, that sort of highlighted what was in your report, and I appreciate that. And so I am going to do that before the September 3rd meeting. And I may have some additional comments at that time, but I'll do what I just said.
I tried to leave big margins.
Yeah, right, you did, that was good. I do have comments about your, the reference to the 1994 master plan and the 2017 reexam. I'll ask Mr. Phillips to address that. I have some opinions of my own on that, and, but I will ask Mr. Phillips to address that issue. On page two of your memo, you make the statement that without supporting traffic, drainage, environmental, or other studies typically part of a site development process, noteworthy is that in future development, when the redevelopers, developer submits a site plan application to the planning board, adherence to these redevelopment plan standards essentially guarantees approval of the project. And I would just like to go on record that I take issue with that. That may be your opinion, and it may be a legality. I'm not, I'm not the lawyer. But as a sitting member of the planning board, I can tell you with certainty that it's, it's my expectation that when somebody brings forth a plan, that it complies with the stormwater rules for the state of New Jersey, for example. And if a redeveloper was to bring forth a plan that was not in compliance with those rules, that would not pass my vote on the planning board, and I don't believe it would pass anybody's vote on the planning board. So there are certain structural things, like stormwater management rules, that are definitely built into the process and are implemented at the planning board level in spite of whatever is said in the redevelopment plan. I do agree that the traffic is not as clear-cut. And, but at the same time, as a member of the planning board, if a traffic study is brought to me, and I live right in that neighborhood, and I know what the traffic is like at 5:00 in the evening on a typical rush hour, and I feel that the traffic is unmanageable, that will be produced by the site, my vote will be no at the site plan level. So I just, I just, I just feel compelled to highlight that because that statement stood out to me as if the redevelopment plan is just like handing the planning board, like, here, you guys do this.
You have a lot of discretion in the master plan, you're perfectly correct. But you, in a zoning ordinance, if a use is listed as a permitted use, you can't deny it based on traffic production. You can manipulate the driveways, but you can't say there's a famous Dunkin' Donuts case that says...
Right, I can't, I can't negate the use, but I can vote no on the plan.
You can deny the site plan.
Correct.
And as you know, that's kind of a negotiation process. But you're correct, that your hands are not tied before the planning board. You have a great discretion. It's just that the developer can rely on the standards of that plan. And that's, that's the tension that...
Yes, I agree, there is a tension here. Also, you did say repeatedly that the setback to the adjoining neighbors was 10 feet. And it was my recollection, it was 15. It was a 10 at one side and 15 on the other.
Yes, it's 10 and 15. So that's not a great distance.
I'm aware.
That's not a great distance. And again, if someone were to tear this down and build an office building today, you would probably, the ordinance would require 35 to 40 feet.
Existing OSG.
Your existing OSG would require that. It's 10% of the lot width or depth. So 10 feet is a lot different from 35, 40 feet.
Agreed. And then there's the whole issue of working with the neighbors, the developer and the neighbors to agree on, to reach agreement on what would be an acceptable barrier from the neighbor's point of view. And that, that's something I just want Mr. Phillips to reiterate in his remark. Is that, is that something that goes in the redevelopment agreement? Or can language be put in there? Or maybe Mr. Carlson?
I'm sorry, concerning what?
Concerning, we've talked about the idea of the developer working with the neighbors to address, you know, to develop particular barriers that would be agreeable to the neighbors.
That would probably be best addressed at the site plan hearing before the planning board. I don't think that's something that would be the subject of a redevelopment agreement.
Okay, so that would be at the site plan level. But the, but the idea of the developer and the neighbors working together would be basically voluntary on part of both?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, good. The, I would like, when Mr. Phillips responds, I would like for him to answer the question that Mr. Steck brought up about the parking across the street needing a use variance for the extra parking for this purpose. Okay, so I know Mr. Phillips will be talking later. I'd like you to add that to your list of, I see that as a legal and a planning thing. Perhaps when Mr. Phillips talks about it at the end, Mr. Carlson can add on. The, just, I put a little star on your report, underlining, it just, you seem to be highlighting the fact that this redevelopment plan works to only of the developer, and there's no input from neighboring property owners. And I do believe that there is opportunity for input, and I do believe that... And I do believe that there is opportunity for input, and I do believe that input is very important, so I just wanted to highlight that. I think your point about trees, that to me goes as part of the site plan, the tree removal, and we do have a tree ordinance, and the connection with historic preservation, those are ideas that I think are worth considering. I think your effect on future use is another point that's worth considering, increasing the coverage to 65% in herbias, that connects to me with the stormwater rules. All of these things that I'm highlighting, they are concerns, but I believe that all of the concerns I'm highlighting would be addressed at the site plan level. So just to highlight that. And I guess that is, I guess that's it.
But there's a next time.
I may have additional questions.
I'm just going to say the next time I think I'll just add smaller margins to my report.
Your margins were much appreciated, thank you. Is there anyone else in the township committee who would like to ask Mr. Steck any questions or make any comments?
Madam Mayor, Peter Mankuso here, may I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Mankuso.
I'd like to address this to Mr. Phillips. Mr. Steck made a point of saying RH, Restoration Hardware, may, after a certain period of time, five, 10, 15 years, decide to abandon the site. Where are we as a township in relation to what we've provided and what we've allowed to have happen there if such an occurrence occurs?
Okay, Mr. Mankuso, at the end of our meeting, approximately, not starting at 9:30, Mr. Phillips is collecting a list of questions from all of us, including the public, and he's going to be commenting on all of these questions at the end. Is there anything else? Mr. Mankuso?
Yes, I heard you, no, thank you, ma'am.
All right, you're done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Grisal?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, Mr. Steck, thank you very much for coming here tonight, and thank you very much for your thoughtful report, it gave us some things to think about, as Mayor Wilson stated. Just so the residents know my background, I have been on the other side of the dais, so to speak. I got my start in learning about local government by being an objector to a development application myself back around the year 2000, 2002 about, and I was an objector on the other side, so I appreciate what the residents are feeling right now. I appreciate the fact that they felt that they wanted to hire a planner to bring forth these issues, and resident input's really important to me, so I'm glad they actually did that and brought you here tonight. So again, thank you for coming, and thank you for the residents who allowed you to come here tonight. Regarding a couple of things that you spoke about, I know Mayor Wilson mentioned, and Paul Phillips is going to address the parking across the street, and you said it's not a primary use, just to add to Paul's list of things to address. I would think that having parking at an office building is a primary use of that land, given that there's an office building there, so I'm not sure how that would be addressed, but I view, you know, parking across the street as a primary use of that particular property. Regarding the, I think you made a comment that you thought that a restaurant was not an appropriate use of the site, did you say that?
I said it's not a permitted use in your zoning ordinance, and it's not a recommended use in your 1994 master plan or the later reexamination reports, and that's why I, my conclusion is that this redevelopment plan is not substantially consistent with your master plan, as the law requires you to do an analysis. And as a consequence, somewhat unusual of the law, is that you have, if it is not consistent, you have to explain why you're doing it anyway in the plan. And right now, your plan says it's consistent, so we don't have to give any rationale.
Right, so given that this property is somewhat bookended, I would say, by the Madison Hotel, which has Rod's Restaurant at one side of it, and Friendly's Restaurant on the other side, so there are two dining establishments on this corridor already, do you still see that a restaurant use of the site still being out of line, given that there's two other dining facilities right on that corridor?
This is the farthest one away from what I would say the more commercialized end of Madison Avenue is, so in my judgment, it kind of extends the corridor another large lot. And it is, again, it's not just another office building, it's a use that's now more intensive than office buildings, and that's the troublesome part of it. Economically, I guess, the judgment has been made by restoration, that, you know, they can do this, but the answer is there are impacts from it. And this is, again, the only thing that's allowed on this office, this property now are, you know, one family house in the corner, because it's still an R-15 zone in the corner, and either government use or office use is in the rest of the property. And again, it's non-residential today, but this is adding something that doesn't just bring it up to neutral, it adds a use that is more disruptive, in my opinion, to a residential environment. So it's a matter of judgment, in my opinion, this extends the corridor further, but it does it with a use that is more active than the office corridor.
And just to point out also that along corridor, there are a number of gas stations also, which, you know, I'm not so happy about having gas stations like that lined up along corridor, but there are those kinds of uses along this corridor as well. So there are variations of different kinds of uses along the entire corridor, and this is a possible, you know, variation of the different type.
It's just that your current zoning pattern, you know, suggests that this is the end of it.
I understand your point now, thank you. With regard to your comment about the trees, trees are very important to me personally. Mayor Wilson and I also sit on, we're both liaisons to our environmental commission here in Morris Township, and stronger tree ordinance is something that actually the environmental commission is looking at right now, so trees are extremely important to me. Again, we'll reiterate that both of us, in addition to being on the environmental commission, we were a lot of house here in Morris Township, Mayor Wilson, we are both on the planning board again, and a tree replacement and a proper tree replacement protocol will be very important to us when we get to site plan approval at the planning board level. I want to ensure that there are plenty of trees put back on that property. I would make the one comment that while the tall trees, the older trees that are there right now provide a wonderful canopy to that property and probably the adjacent properties, you know, during the sunset hours, in terms of buffering to the adjoining neighbors, those tall trees, in my personal view, provide buffering only because of the, you know, of the, not the canopy, the trunk, I think the trunk?
Vertical.
The vertical elongate, you know, part of the tree, the canopy where the leaves are are much higher above and not providing any buffering, whereas if we put in some trees of appropriate height, and again, that gets back to the site plan approval, and what we would be seeking, we'd be seeking trees that would be of an appropriate height to properly buffer the adjoining neighbors, that would develop into an appropriate canopy that would keep that buffering, you know, for long periods of time. Those are the kinds of things I'm already thinking about, you know, well ahead of, if this thing gets to the planning board, are the kinds of things that I've been looking at, because again, you know, buffering to the neighbors is super, super important to make, to make sure that they're satisfied with whatever buffering we do, including the wall, including trees, anything else that they want to bring up. So with regards to your comment about the trees and how majestic they are, I agree, but the point is that in terms of buffering, I think those mature trees don't provide as much buffer as the younger trees might when they're replaced.
It's just that you don't need buffering now, and this is a use, this use has been, property has been dormant. When it was an office use, I don't believe it was offensive to the neighbors, because it wasn't blooming on the evenings and weekends. And so you're correct that the tall trees, you know, the canopy is of some value, but at a ground level, they don't do much today. It's just that you have to keep in mind, now we're going to be replaced by parking areas, and when are those parking areas going to be in peak use? Weekends and evenings. So with a 10-foot width, I'm not sure that you can effectively buffer, and that's, you know, a judgment that you have to make in the plan itself, and obviously at the time of site plan approval, where you decide what kind of vegetation or what kind of wall.
Yeah, I better understand your point now, so thank you for that clarification. And just lastly, your comment about things that get negotiated behind the scenes and questioning, you know, public trust, the objective of this board, this body, and the objective of the planning board with Mayor Wilson and myself, and the level of communication that we've tried to bring to the community, not just with this project, but all projects, it is our objective to bring as much out into the light as possible, to have as little negotiated behind the scenes, if anything at all, and do everything publicly. I think everybody here would agree with that.
And the fact that you've gone more than the minimum notice requirement to the neighbors is evidence of that, I understand your records.
Very good. So again, thank you for coming tonight, thank you to the residents who brought you here tonight, I very much appreciate your testimony and their ability to enlighten the township committee on their views, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grisal. Mr. Jorki?
We're all on jockey, go back and forth.
Mr. Arbenides, do you have any comments or questions?
I don't, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jorki?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Steck, together you reported it earlier this week, so thank you for providing that with some time to go through it thoroughly before you came here in front of us tonight. And I would just like to echo, I think it's the opinion of this committee to try to provide as much notification to our residents as possible, particularly going beyond what the minimum requirement is, and I just wanted to highlight that Mayor Wilson has gone above and beyond in trying to basically encourage the state of New Jersey and the state legislature to allow for that distance to be expanded for developers, notifying the residents in terms of development, expanding that threshold, and I think it's a laudable cause, and I hope that our state legislators will try to pass that down the trend. I did have a question as it regards to parking, and I am concerned with the 15-foot buffer between the residents at Crescent and this property, having looked at it myself back in March, and then also recently visiting some of the residents there in the past few weeks. My question is, and this could be for Mr. Steck and Paul, if you wanted to jump in or Jim, those parking spots that immediately brush up against that buffer, I count 28, is there any other area that could be tapped into in this lot that those spots could be moved to? I understand that it appeared in a report here from the Historic Preservation Commission, but is that front area, a corner of Canfield and Madison Avenue, would that be able to have some of those parking spots to alleviate the pressure on the residents who live on Crescent?
First of all, you know you're losing a little corner of it because of the realignment of the road, but the answer, that certainly flies more in the face of historic preservation, that's how the public generally sees this property. And while you can physically put parking there, it starts to bring into question, are you really doing the historic preservation that was intended? And I think that's, you know, parking's important, parking is often, but flows into the adjacent neighborhood, but to look exclusively at parking and not aesthetics is the wrong way to go. And it might mean that this project is simply too big or too intense for the property.
So basically, if, to remove that pressure, the entire site plan would have to change? Or the proposal would...
Right, the redevelopment plan talks about preserving that front lawn, and that's obviously very important, but again, the part of the building that's going to be saved is the part that's getting kind of a heavy hit on parking, and in fact, closer to Madison than the building. So while the front lawn is being preserved, it's being preserved kind of for the new construction as opposed to the historic building.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, is that it, Mr. Jorki? Okay, I guess that is it, and that was right, Mr. Steck, we thank you for Joy House, we thank you for your effort, and we will move on at this point.
I will patiently wait, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, I would like to bring up, I believe I saw Carol Clark in on our list of panelists. Carol is the chair of the Morris Township Historic Preservation Commission, and is going to give us a brief summary of the HPC's response to this proposal. So Carol, are you there?
Yep. Thanks, Mayor Wilson.
Thank you, go ahead.
Just going to give a little historic context. Paul covered a lot of what I was going to say, so I'm not going to repeat things, hopefully I'll add a few points. In the years 1885 to 1929, a large colony of American millionaires discovered Morris County, and our area was known as the inland Newport. If you look at a 1910 map, you can find 160 gilded age mansions built by prominent families looking to escape uncomfortable living conditions in the city. They were attracted by our clean air, water, and abundant space, and they came here in the summer and then began to live here year-round. And there are parallels to today, a lot of people are discovering Morris County as a nice alternative to living in the city. Of those 160 mansions, 80 of them were in Morris Township, with just 26 remaining today. The others burned to the ground or they were razed. Some of the remaining ones are still single-family homes, but most of them have been saved through adaptive reuse, and all of these properties are either listed on the National Register of Historic Places or are considered to be locally important to us. Like Mr. Phillips said, the Abbey has been on the National Register since 1985, and it is generally considered to be the most distinctive residence ever built locally, and it does occupy a very prominent location on Madison Avenue. And it survived down to this day, because it found new life, it was converted into a Lutheran church and then the office building. And lucky for us, it still stands, but it is neglected, it is deteriorating, and it is at risk. The redevelopment plan before you and Restoration Hardware's intentions and track record will ensure the future of this at-risk resource. It will also enable public access to the mansion for years to come. Adaptive reuse of threatened historic resources is the most successful way to keep them available for future generations while making them economically viable. Morris Township and the Morris Town Historic Preservation Commissions urge you to pass this redevelopment ordinance. Both commissions welcome the opportunity to work with the redevelopers to ensure the future of the Abbey. And I just want to say one more thing, I was looking at the nomination that Mr. Steck referred to, and there are three areas of significance for this property. The first one is significant because the person who lived there was involved with communications, of course, it's significant for its architecture, it's also significant because of music, and there's nothing in the nomination that says anything about the landscaping and the trees, and I don't think that is as important as, say, the architecture.
Is that it?
Pretty much, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them, or I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Amy Curry, at the Morris County Historical Society. it over to my colleague, Amy Curry, at the Morris County Historical Society.
Thank you. That was my question. I know we have a report from Amy Curry, who's the executive director of the Morris County Historical Society, and I was wondering if she was going to be here to present her findings or if you were going to do that on her behalf.
She's going to do it. She's supposed to raise her hand.
I'm an attendee.
Okay, she's an attendee.
I'm a reporter, Karen.
Okay. So Mr. Daley is going to be--
Jim is going to be the panelist.
Oh, Jim. Okay.
So I see Amy. I don't see her last name, but I did promote her to a panelist. It's the, I'm assuming that's the Amy we're talking about?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Are you Amy Curry?
Yes, I am Amy Curry.
Thank you for walking.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me tonight and allowing me the opportunity to address you all this weekend, this evening, excuse me. My name is Amy Curry, and I am the executive director of the Morris County Historical Society. We're located at Acorn Hall and have been since 1971. Last week, I did, on behalf of the Morris County Historical Society, submit our formal letter of support for Restoration Hardware's plans for the Abbey, which I hope you all received and had a chance to look over. But this evening, I'd like to take a quick moment really to highlight the nuances and philosophies of RH's preservation ethic as seen in some of their earlier restorations, which further bring me to support their endeavors at the Abbey. Well, preservationists consider a project such as this, it's really about hearing the words, listening to the explanation of those words, and their related philosophies, and seeing past performance where respect was given to the primary, be that documentary or existing historic fabric. These are the hallmarks that illustrate true conceptual understanding and garner true respect from the preservation community. RH leadership has this conceptual understanding. They reclaim the history of place. They celebrate the skill of earlier craftsmen. They honor the structure's original intent, and they return the grandeur and integrity of the building. And they've proven this nearly two dozen times. So beyond understanding historic preservation as a craft that respects the historic significance of the structure, RH's plans to return the Abbey to what it was, to blur the lines between residential and retail, home and hospitality, even with respect to the Minis' original 1904 intent for their home, is spot-on. After all, at the turn of the 20th century, everyone between New York City and Washington, DC, and west to Morris Township recognized the Minis as opulent entertainers. And on McCall, the Abbey, in all its appointments, was a very definition of modernity, cutting-edge construction and forwardness of thought. Our area, with its rich Gilded Age history, is very special, very unique, and very rare. And I believe the same can be said for this opportunity with RH. This is the last best hope for the Abbey. This business model may very well be the last best hope for the few remaining Gilded Age structures left in Morris Township and Morris Town. So let us take a page from Restoration Hardware's book. Let this restoration and adaptive reuse set a new standard, a new bar for the future of our local history, leading and not following, charting a new course. In the preservation of our history, will we launch our future or be content to watch it turn to rubble and dust? Thank you very much. And if anyone has any questions?
Thank you, Amy. We really appreciate your comments. I myself am a, as Carol can tell you, a big supporter of our Historic Preservation Commission's work, and I have never seen RHPC or heard from you guys, the Morris County Historical Society, comment on a project such as this before. So I appreciate hearing your perspective, and to me, it's an important part of the information, the full picture of information that we're considering as we consider this redevelopment plan. So with that, I'll see if anyone else on the committee has any questions. Mr. Grayson?
Thank you. Thank you, Carol and Amy, for being here tonight, and thank you for your reports. Carol mentioned, this question for both of you, I'm not sure who will answer it, but Carol mentioned that there are 26 of these types of structures still remaining, and Carol mentioned that this holds a prominent place along Madison Avenue. And one of them actually is across the street from me. I live out in the west part of town, across the street from Del Barton, and that's an adaptive reuse of the old Coontz estate, and they preserve the old home there, and it's adapted to school use right now. But you mentioned that the Abbey sits in a prominent place along Madison Avenue, and I'm wondering, are there any structures, again referring back to the Coontz estate at Del Barton, it sits very, very far back from here, you can't see it unless you actually go onto campus and take a look at it. Are there any structures that are any closer than the Abbey to the street currently out of those 26 structures?
Well, you'd probably be surprised to know that the Carmelite is in a monastery on Madison Avenue. It was formerly Vermont. It's the monastery now. That sits very close to the road. Twin Oaks, which is the Morris Museum, sits pretty close to the road. Most of them had, a lot of them had a lot of setbacks. I'm just looking at my list right now. Most of them had very far setbacks.
The point of my question is that, you know, I know a lot of the historic structures, and one reason why I think preserving this particular structure is important is because of its prominence. It is one of the few that you can actually see from the road. You can see its beauty as you drive by it, not like, you know, the monastery has a wall in front of it, the Morris Museum has a wall in front of it. I mentioned Del Barton is set so far back from the street, you can't even see it. This is one of those beautiful mansions that actually the public will be able to enjoy. There's a visual benefit to preserving the building that you may not necessarily get from other historic structures in the town. And I think that is an additional benefit to preserving this particular structure, is the visual benefit that people get, that they don't get from the other historical structures in our town because of the reasons I stated.
That's all. Yeah, that's true. It's actually breathtaking, and the fact that this is going to be a suburban location compared to what's going on with Restoration Hardware in all the major cities like Chicago and New York and all over California, really, where they've saved all kinds of historic buildings, some of them mid-century modern, actually. But they take their time. If you've ever been to the one in Manhattan, in the Meatpacking District, it took them seven years, and they were very careful and tenacious in the work. They worked with the community. You know, they, I think they will treat it with the kind of respect that it deserves.
I agree with you on that, Carol. Definitely. The one in Boston, which they, it was the old Museum of Natural History. Of course, if you saw the video, that one is actually sitting on wooden pilings because that was a swamp. So there were a lot of considerations. We've discussed, you know, the fact that the Abbey has been largely left vacant and does have some issues, some structural integrity, but I don't think that that's anything really to be concerned about. You know, with historic preservation, it's only when a building really does cease to exist that it cannot be brought back.
So again, as I stated, I'm sure my microphone's on before. As I stated earlier, when Restoration Hardware has turned to speak at the end of this hearing, I really would very much like them to address, you know, the historic property and their goals in preserving it appropriately. So I hope they'll address it when their remarks come around. Thank you.
I'm sure they will. Thank you. Mr. Jorphy?
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to address a question I asked earlier to both of you, Carol and Amy. Thank you so much for taking the time to come on tonight to your presentations. What is the significance of the front area of the property when it comes to historic preservations? And the focus has been on the structure. If parking were to go in front of the new wings of the building as laid out in the concept plan, would that be an inhibitor to the historic preservation perspective?
Well, I think our main concern is preserving the facade and also the view from the street. If you're familiar with the Peck School, they recently redid the whole front yard to open up views of the mansion again. So our first consideration is the facade and preserving that view. The accessory buildings should be simple and not detract from the Abbey. And as for parking, I don't know if anybody's considered underground or structures maybe behind the two new Abbey buildings. To me, I've been through this a couple times in the township, and there always, there just has to be a lot of back and forth so we get the best result possible. And that's why we're willing to work closely with the developer.
I do agree with Carol. The building is of foremost significance, but yes, I mean, where you can definitely move parking to a side of the building that it's not in front or doesn't impede on the historic side of the property, I mean, that's always a bad bonus. But in this case, I do believe that it's the preservation of the structure really that is of foremost significance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jorphy. Is anyone else on the township committee having questions or comments for Carol and Amy? Okay, in that case, I'd like to thank you, Carol and Amy. We appreciate the information. We appreciate your perspective, and we will move on at this point. So what I'd like to do at this point is, we're going to take a five-minute break, and during that time, our ambassadors outdoors are going to get our members of the public lined up and brought in, and so we will begin with five members of the public to share any questions or comments, and we will be strict about the five-minute time limit. We are going to go a little bit past what I said in the beginning because we did get a little bit delayed. I think we'll go to somewhere between 9:45 and 10:00 and then wrap. So we are running a little late, and I do want to get at least a few members of the public in before we close out tonight. So we need five minutes to get the people from outdoors lined up and inside. We will resume at 9:15. So we will see you back then. Thank you.
Good work.
Are we ready? Okay, we're going to begin the public comment portion of our meeting, and the way this is going to work, we are going to be strict about the five-minute time limit. And at four minutes, Mr. Quinn is going to hold up a little sign, just letting you know as the speaker that you've got one minute left, and then 30 seconds, and then it's done. I do hate to be this strict about it, but we have many people, and my goal for the first round of comments is that everybody who wishes to speak for the first round of comments is able to.
Will that be the second? That'll be your second round?
Yes.
I have to tell you, I don't--
Not tonight, but there will be a second round on the third--
Everything I had to do in an hour or so.
Okay. So are you the number one?
Yeah, I'm the number one.
Okay, come on up. And if you could please say your name and address for the record.
My name for the record is Remo Enkudo of 1316 Gilso. I'm a Remo's member, and I have to say several things for the record. One is for the reasons mostly said by Peter Manco, so that I do not think that the meeting is appropriately meeting the requirements of a public meeting. I'm not going to labor the point that Mr. Manco, or your advocate, is saying that, and I echo all that. And we've also had some issues outside, some of them have been corrected, but not everybody hear everything. So I'll just leave that for the record. The second thing is that I would like to say is that, again, since I'm trying to rush through this, is that I do not believe that the plan has been properly vetted to be able to get to where it is at this point. There are a lot of things that have not been looked at. You know, we've talked about the parking across the street, that a use variance is necessary, but nobody talked about the fact that you're going to be crossing, if you had 60 parking spaces across the street and valleys going across the street to park cars, that means 120 trips back and forth of people crossing Route 124 to park cars at night. I have not seen a comment from the police chief on that, but I cannot believe that any police chief is going to be happy about people crossing 124 at night to go and get cars back and forth. That's number two. So that's just an indication that no one's looked at this as thoroughly as it needs to be looked at. With regard to Mr. Phillips and the, and there's some misleading information there. He is not wrong, but he's, but it's not entirely accurate. Mr. Phillips, where is he?
He's on--
He's on the road.
Okay, Mr. Phillips. You talk about buffers but not setbacks. Can you hear me? Mr. Phillips?
Yes, you can, sir.
Okay.
I'm listening.
Okay. If the, if this, if this plan is passed as written and the planning board wants to remove the two entrances on Campfield Road, can they do that?
Sir, you can answer all the questions.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Well, the answer is you can't. I can answer that. The other question is, is that he's talking about buffers, he's not talking about setbacks. You can, the planning board can decide whether they're going to put toias or daisies in the buffer area, but they can't move the buffer area from 10 feet to 40 feet. And that's where, you know, the problems are. The buffers, like I said, what buffer material you put in, the planning board can talk about, but they can't talk about moving the setbacks. The setbacks are in stone. They can't talk about how many parking spaces are going to be on the site. If there's, if the plan that is passed by this board says that there's 60 parking spaces on site and the planning board decides that they want 40, tough. There's an ordinance and it says 60, they get 60. If the planning board decides that the building is too large, okay, and they want to make it smaller, they say, well, we'd like you to take, you know, 5,000 feet off of it. No, they do not have that option to do that. The ordinance provides for how many square feet they can have. That's what they get. When this plan is passed, it will be in stone. Okay? All, yes, you can determine, you know, what kind of buffering you're going to put in the buffers, but you can't move the setback. You can't change the parking. You can have the parking across the street except that you're going to need a use variance. The two streets sits on Campfield Road, which I object to most. If this plan is passed with those two streets there, where you can stand on your head and spit wood mingles, but you're not going to get rid of those two roads because they are in the ordinance. And I seriously object to that. I feel that, I mean, you can do the right-hand turn only, and maybe some kind of plan could work, but, I mean, there's a stop sign on Easely over there, and people, half the people go right through it, they don't even see the stop sign. So I, and I mean, I have a whole lot of issues.
I know.
What opportunity am I going to be able to have to be able to address? I mean, I have a significant number of issues.
I suggest a couple of things. First of all, I'm sure you will come back on the third. And second of all, if you have time and are able, if you could put some of your points and bullet points, that would be helpful. I know that's extra work if you prefer not to do that. I understand.
At this point, there is, there is a lot, there's so much wrong with this--
Okay. All right. That does conclude the five minutes for tonight. There will be more time next week. I know that you have a lot to contribute. I appreciate that, and I know you have a lot of good questions to bring up, and you will have-- you will have a chance to bring those up at the next meeting. I just want to highlight for Mr. Phillips, the issue that Mr. Acaputo has brought up about the two driveways. He had questions about that. My question is, is that something that could be changed as part of our, the redevelopment plan that's on the table right now? I'd like you to add that to your questions to answer later. And Mr. Acaputo made the statement that when the plan is passed, it's in stone, but I would just highlight that it's not passed yet. And part of the purpose of, a big purpose from my point of view of tonight's meeting is to identify concerns and discuss possibilities for addressing them, which would to me be part of the process. And it's, the plan is not passed in stone until it's passed. And the hearing is, what we're looking at here are possibilities that, for changes that might be made. So I meant those two points and I thank you for coming in and we will move on from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barrett, anything to put in the podium?
Uh, okay.
And Mayor, if I could also ask Mr. Phillips to add a question to his list-
Sure.
That Mr. Acaputo stated that once the, the present plan has a 10-foot setback, once it hits the planning board, if the planning board, once it sees an actual site plan with the actual layout, if the planning board does find a way to increase that to 15 or maybe 20 feet, not promising anything, just hypothetically, I assume that the planning board could actually make that change. So please address that in your remarks at the end too. Thank you.
Okay, you're getting a building on that list. Thank you. Okay, next person, please. And for the benefit of the public outside, we are cleaning the podium and the mic between each speaker to be in accord with state guidelines. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is George Caramellis. I live at 11 Pickford Drive in Morris Township.
Go ahead.
I'm here to offer a perspective that I haven't heard yet this evening. My wife and I, Nina, owns British Home and Torian at 91 Main Street in Madison. We are a 7,000 square foot home furnishings retailer, interior design studio. We have six interior designs that work for us and we offer, we also are a home to many visiting interior designers from all around the area, including Morris Town, Morris Township. We wrote a letter to Mayor Wilson and Mr. Quinn, a month or so ago, and I'd just like to read that letter and then hopefully it'll take less than five minutes. We understand that Restoration Hardware is in the process of purchasing an abbey to open their, their interior design gallery. We want to raise some concerns about this major chain store coming to Morris Township. RH is a publicly traded chain store of 150 stores, one of the largest U.S. home furnishings retailers with over 2.5 billion in sales. It is also significant that much of their production of product has shifted from the U.S. to China. On the other hand, British Home and Torian uses many U.S. domestically-made furniture of equal quality or greater than Restoration Hardware. This proposed RH establishment of the abbey will include a home furnishings retail environment, interior design services, one bar and a restaurant. RH also intends to offer landscape design services from their design galleries and their publicly stated strategy is to enter the guest house business. They also plan to enter the housing industry by building developments with homes fully furnished with their brand of furniture, floor and window coverings and landscapes. This poses a major threat not only for, for our home furnishings and interior design business at British Home and Torian, but also to the many privately-owned developers, interior design firms, restaurants, inns, hotels such as the Madison Hotel, and local real estate developers whose residents might otherwise purchase home furnishings, interior design services, landscape and architectural design, and landscape materials, et cetera, of locally-owned independent entrepreneurs. RH's chairman, Gary Friedman, excuse me, proudly states, quote, "We have disrupted the home furnishings industry and intend to dominate the entire home and hospitality industries, the result of which is to put entrepreneurs and local businesses out of business." We've been residents of Morris Township for 21 years. We poured our heart and soul into British Home and Torian to keep it alive during the first economic slowdown in 2008 and currently during the influx of the COVID situation as well as the increasing competition we get from the internet. Let me quote Gary Friedman, the chairman of RH. "We will continue to be opportunistic about both sources and uses of our capital. Our goal is to be in a position to take advantage of the many opportunities that may present themselves in times of dislocation, which we're living through. Our strategy is to open new design galleries in every major market and unlock the value of our vast assortment, generating, generating $5 to $6 billion in sales in North America." Because I want to talk about how these communities that they want to build, that would be built by RH, furnished by RH, designed by RH, would come into local suburban communities like ours. Many towns throughout New Jersey do not permit the intrusion of chain stores to infiltrate and ultimately dominate their retail environment. We hope that the township administration will consider these factors and implications that prevent the sale of the historic abbey to Restoration Hardware. While this may appear to be an appealing opportunity to save the abbey, it is at a high cost to the local community, of locally-owned businesses, and will have severely negative impact on many local residents. I would only, in my last 30 seconds, point out that the fact that Restoration Hardware has developed its businesses in malls and in urban settings has enabled local business owners such as my wife and I and many, many others to flourish in the suburban communities that we, that we exist in, you know, here in Morris Township and throughout the state of New Jersey. Many vibrant in-town local businesses exist because those guys aren't here. By bringing the big guys into the suburban setting, you put at risk hundreds of small businesses like ours throughout Madison, Morris Township, Morris Town, surrounding towns that have serviced the home furnishings and hospitality industry for decades.
Very interesting perspective. Thank you so much for coming in and sharing that.
Okay, thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
You have any questions or?
Not right now. It's on my list of points to take into account. Very interesting point.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next? Oh, I'm sorry. We have to clean the podium and the microphone between speakers. Very good. Thank you so much. Next, please say your name and address for the record, if you would.
Good evening. My name is Terrence Smith, 6 Independence Way, Morris Township. If you don't know, Independence Way is part of Liberty Green. I want to start with just two general comments. One, I was very disappointed by the logistics tonight. There is a way to hold a successful public meeting. It's the same way you get to Carnegie Hall. I am also concerned about the inability to question witnesses as they come forward. Those who have now had questions posed to them for their opportunity to respond, how do I, as a member of the public, know what those responses are going to be so I might provide a counterargument at the next year and or at some point later? This is an up or down vote by the board. The substantive issues of the proposal as presented are not negotiable. If you don't like one of those substantive elements of this plan, you vote no. And the entire proposal goes back to stage one and comes forward again. It's that simple. This is not a negotiable process where you can negotiate about a setback here or a building height there or whether or not to put a fence or daisies along one of the buffer zones. There are two very distinct elements to this plan. The substantive stuff is what really matters. If you don't like one of them, you vote no and we start again. From Liberty Green, our interest obviously is traffic and hunchball road. I don't think I need to remind anybody on the board about the pending development for Florin Park in St. Elizabeth, the pending development for Morris Township in St. Elizabeth, the pending proposal by Crummond Bank, the rods proposal that was withdrawn without prejudice last year, they can bring it back if they choose to. There are also indications that some of the other properties on this part of Madison Avenue are also ripe for redevelopment. Traffic, as you own this mayor from living in the area, is intolerable at certain times of the day to suggest that this is only going to add an incremental irrelevant element to that. I think the lies that age-old statement about the straw that broke the camel's back. Talking about the parking, looking at the off-site parking, there is a wall that surrounds the parking lot at 310 Madison Avenue. There is no access from the parking lot that fronts the building directly across the street, nor is there a sidewalk on that side of Madison Avenue along the front part of 310 Building. As I understand it, there is no access to the Crummond Foster Park from Campfield Road. Where are all these people going to go? One thing that is often overlooked in traffic studies is pedestrian traffic. Having people walk back and forth across this road, whether they are valets or consumers or anybody else, is just looking for trouble that has not yet been addressed. One last point with regard to the visuals of this, the important aspect of the abbey building. As I understand the proposal, the building itself will not be visible from the Campfield side once the new buildings are done. It will not be visible from the back. It will not be visible from the east side. It will be visible to those people who are driving by at 40 miles an hour on Madison Avenue. And if that's the driving force for this proposal, I don't believe that's sufficient to justify a yes vote. Thank you very much. I would like just to say that I join Mr. Steck's opinion says they have already been expressed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I, I do understand if people who come up, if, if, if they so choose, if they come up and object to the proposal, I would like to hear if they would be, if, if their trade-off isn't allowing the building to be demolished. It's a big trade-off, I think, that we all have to consider and objecting to the proposal is, if the individual rules is one thing, but I think delaying the project, and I've stated this publicly earlier, that if we wait a year, we push this off to another possibility, we won't have the opportunity to preserve the building because it's just crumbling in and disrepair. So if people object, I'd like to hear what they think about losing the building. And if, if it's worth it, it could be worth it to people to lose the building.
And if they have time within the five minutes of the other-
Yes, yes.
-information or share.
But I'd appreciate hearing that perspective from people who do object.
Okay.
So we can, we can understand their-
We'll add that to the mix.
We can understand their perspective on history as well. Thank you.
Okay.
My name is Tom Mayoli. I am the owner of the abbey and I am smiling behind the mask, but you know, I think the people of the town and clearly people don't like change in the neighborhood and this is a big change, but I think they need to look at this as a blessing rather than a detriment. In the minute, in the middle of a COVID environment where businesses are closing down, office buildings are no longer occupied, they're, they're vacant along Madison Avenue and buildings and properties can no longer be used to their capacity. Townships are struggling to save Main Street retail. We have a building, a historic building, that someone wants to come in and put millions and millions of dollars in to restore and bring tax dollars to the town. We're clear with the board stated that all the comments are going to be reserved for five minutes. I may need six, okay? But you know, the, 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 the propose of, needs to be taken into consideration. Clearly the board, when a board is hired, they're hired to represent the entire town, not 10 or 15 objectors. And while it's important to deal with the neighbors' issues, which I think Restoration Hardware is clearly done and they're willing to do, there's 22,000 people in Morris Township that need to be considered, to consider in this application and those people are affected by this also. It's not just the 10 or 15 neighbors. Those people's tax implications are, their taxes are being raised every year because budgets are being struggled. Office buildings that are vacant are going to come in for tax appeal and how is the township going to meet their budget? I don't think that any of these objectors are looking at that, but they're the same of people that will be at the tax board arguing when their tax bill goes up. So with that being said, despite what Mr. Steck has misrepresented in the fact that the 15 set, the 15-foot versus the 10-foot setbacks, there's a lot of misrepresentations going around the neighborhood that Restoration Hardware is not willing to work with the neighbors, that the town hasn't planned this properly, which to me basically is testing the intelligence of the board and the professionals that the town has hired. These people are professionals. They planned the entire town. They have looked at every single aspect of this and what is right and wrong for the town. And I, and I believe that, and I commend the board for all the efforts that they've put forth. This was not a 15-minute decision to adopt this plan, to put it into play. So it just, it didn't just come out, it wasn't just pulled from a hat. You know, Mr. Cle, Mr. Steck's testimony was clearly written on behalf of objectors and it was written specifically to delay or stall or, or, or quash this process when the reality of it is, is that Restoration Hardware is willing to work with the objectors and willing to, to, to figure out a way to make the objectors and the neighbors happy. So I think that goes a long way for what, for what the, you know, what Restoration Hardware is willing to do. Now, when it comes to alternative usage for the property, I think that, you know, they want to talk about traffic flows and they want to talk about what the peaks are going to be on the weekends. You know, the property is zoned today and I turned down a deal with a church, with Abundant Life Church out of Whitmanie who wanted to take the property. Could you imagine the impact on this, on Sundays when a church gathers at, at this location and it's zoned for this? Could you imagine the impact where it's school, where it's zoned for, and a, and a drug or alcohol rehabilitation center for the church? So I think the neighbors need to like take it down a notch and look at the alternatives and look at the efforts that the town is putting forth to make them happy and satisfy them and the pressure that the town has been putting on Restoration Hardware to make sure that the neighbors are satisfied. So I think, you know, I commend the board and the Historical Society for standing behind this project. You know, Mr. Avenatti talks about square footage and condos and, and all these other alternatives for the project, but you know, 60 condos is two, two spaces per, per parking space. That, that is 120 cars and, and there's going to be on the weekends, there's going to be visitors that come in and out of this place. You know, today it's a 21,000 square foot office building. At its full capacity, there'll be more cars coming in and out of that office building than there will be Restoration Hardware. So I just want to say, I stand behind the board, I stand behind the Historical Society and I commend you for, for all you're doing for the neighbors and the town, but please take into consideration 22,000 people, not 15. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayoli.
I have here printed out 350 emails that came across website and Instagram that I would like to pass out, one copy to each board member so that they can read and these are all people of the township in support of the abbey project.
Thank you. While we're waiting, I'm going to ask the people on Zoom, we will have time, I believe, for probably two people. for probably two people from our attendees on Zoom. So I'm looking at Mr. Slate and asking you to perhaps identify the first two on the list who have their hands up.
Sure, it's Kristen Kumyati, and it looks like Nicholas Kumyati.
Okay, so we'll take our last person in person here, and then we will go over and you have the Zoom people speak.
Mayor Wilson, members of the Township Committee, my name is John Harper. I live at 13 Old Glen Road. My perspective is as follows. I've been in public service for over 50 years in various capacities at the local, county, and state level. I've also been a judge, a retired judge. And I know how difficult it is to make decisions with such conflicting comments and representations. Your process will allow you to reconcile the differences in the following fashion. I submit that you have the ability to consider amendments to the plan, revisions to the plan in the course of adopting the redevelopment. And you can call on the expertise of the planning board, the TCC, and any other input you feel is worthy of time and investigation. Why? Because, as Mr. Maoli said, and others have said, this is a very important decision, not only for him as a property owner, for Restoration Hardware, but for the neighbors themselves. So I would say to you, put it in the value most appropriately, the planning board. I also will say that what drives this plan, in my opinion, is principally economics in tension with aesthetics and the preservation of the Abbey and the neighborhood. Balance this in your decision-making. Consider the opportunity of a $35 million investment to the town, but also the opportunity to satisfy the abutting owners who have legitimate and timely concerns. Balance them, work it out, mediate, negotiate, and come up with a better plan in the best interest of Morris Township, the neighborhood, and the developer and Restoration Hardware. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good advice. Okay, we are ready now to take some comments from people who are on Zoom.
Kristen, so you've been unmuted.
Thank you so much. So hi, everyone. Kristen Kumyati, Seven Bradley Road. So I'm a resident in the vicinity of this project, and I, among others who I know are also on this Zoom call, we've started a group in support of a project called Common Station Neighbors for Responsible Development. And so this group was formed to make it be known to the township, that there are, and the committee, that there are many people in our community who are in support of this project plan, and that our voices can be just as loud as the opposition. You know, we started a Facebook page about three weeks ago. We launched the Facebook page just to keep people informed and to share information. Our most recent post, just so everyone knows, if you haven't been on the page or haven't seen it, was about six days ago. The goal was there to just share the Abbey's webpage, to encourage people to voice their opinion, voice their concerns, to take the survey, and to just get the word out there that this was happening. In six days, this post got about 1,400 engagements, 77 shares, 186 likes, and over 60 comments of positive, you know, just positive comments in support of this project. The community members shared, you know, stories of the history of the Abbey, and the theme was just overwhelming, that there's nothing else like it. Some of the quotes, "There's nothing else like it. It needs to be saved. Please stop the wrecking ball. Do not destroy American history." There's a huge benefit to this project. Do we want Restoration Hardware? Yes, we do. Condos? No, we don't. This is the best scenario. So I'm not going to take up a full five minutes, but I just wanted to share that information with everyone, especially the Township Committee, to let them know that there are many people out there in support of this project, like Mr. Maoli had said before in his, when he got up to speak. You know, we feel that losing this would be a devastating failure, leaving the door open for a wrecking ball and then condos to follow. And I'll tell you right now, we do not want condos. So I thank you for having me speak, and I appreciate your time, and I will, you know, leave the rest of my minutes up to someone else.
Thank you, Kristen. I have one request for you. Could you please send me an email with the stats that you just referenced from your Facebook page?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, next up?
Next is Nicholas.
Nicholas. Hi, Nicholas, could you please say your name and address for the record? Is he there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry, it was saying I was muted for a second. So my name is Nicholas Kumyati. I'm at Seven Bradley Road as well. I live with Kristen, and I appreciate her leaving me a couple minutes to speak. And I'm also part of the Neighborhood Group, which we founded as a part of a counter-voice because we felt like our voices were being disregarded entirely by this opposition group, the neighbors of the Abbey. What happened here was that we had said, you know, we would like this project, we would like to work with Restoration Hardware, and we would like to, we didn't know Mr. Maoli whatsoever, but in this process, we've come to learn and come to appreciate the fact that both Mr. Maoli and Restoration Hardware will in fact speak with the neighbors, and this Neighborhood Group will not speak with the neighbors whatsoever. Ironically, if you speak up and you have a disagreement, you are boxed out from that coalition. So I take a great umbrage with Mr. Stack's initial point that he speaks for the neighborhood. He does not speak for the neighborhood. Mr. Stack has no standing to speak for the neighborhood. He should name the individuals who retained him and speak on behalf of those individuals whatsoever. But that's a common theme from what we heard from Mr. Stack. What we heard from Mr. Stack was he also speaks for the trees, just like the Lorax, apparently. However, when I was in law school, I learned that you cannot speak for the trees, you have no standing to speak for the trees. So what we heard from him was a lot of opinion, of which he is not qualified whatsoever to speak about. If I had him here as an expert, the first thing he would have to do is qualify on the various subjects of which he is going to opine. Here's what he opined on, whether the plan was appropriate. Well, okay, fine, he's a planner, whether it met certain specifics, but I think the council members, the committee members, excuse me, handled those objections appropriately. Next, he got into traffic, trees, whether or not this was a historical value, was worth it, and then the neighborhood's point of view. I would submit to the panel that he is not qualified to speak on the neighborhood point of view, he's not qualified to speak on whether or not this plan is the appropriate historical value, and he's sure not qualified to speak on whether trees make up the historical value. So I would say that on all of those points, the committee should completely disregard Mr. Stack's presentation. With respect to the historical value, we heard from people who are actually qualified to talk about this. Amy, and I forgot her last name, and Mr. Barkin, fantastic presentation. That's the reality of what we're dealing with here, not just a bunch of people who are complaining because they don't like anything that results in change. That is how you preserve a property in 2020. You get a partnership with somebody who is going to preserve and use it. My other favorite criticism that we had here was that the developer is developing the property for its purposes. Well, of course they are. And millions and millions of dollars for Mr. Stack's purposes. Also, one more issue that I have with the speaking for the neighborhood, and I heard him say the point of view, he lives in Maplewood, New Jersey, okay? He has no idea what the people of this neighborhood speaks about, okay? He was hired by a handful of people, and I am completely offended by the implication that he speaks for my neighborhood. I live with a stone's throw away from the Abbey, and I can tell you that the majority of the people that I speak to on a daily basis are in support of this project. And I will be there on the third, I'm quarantining, I was out of state, I will be there on the third to further support this project. Lastly, not lastly, excuse me, next, traffic. Oh my God, traffic's going to be such a big issue. It's going to be humongous. Then he goes on in the next step breath to say, "But it's different because it's not going to be at the same kind of traffic as an office building because the office building's between nine and five. This traffic's going to be at another time." Okay, so what does that mean? Then there is no traffic issue because any purported traffic issue is obviated by the fact that it's not during the time where we have traffic. Okay, so that point makes no sense whatsoever. So with that, last thing, we cannot have a Honeywell scenario. Thank you, I have one minute. We cannot have a Honeywell scenario here. We cannot have the voice, a few loud voices torpedo what could have been a better project and result in more and more condos. And to Mr. Abernathy, this neighborhood does not want more condos, and we don't want a condo project there. We opposed the prior project that everybody was against. But if I, I know that you're saying I'm out of time, but one last thing, and I apologize for talking quickly, it's been waiting a long time, but the idea that the commercial zone ends at Crummond Foster, if that doesn't tell you that you need to completely disregard everything in that plan, I don't know what does.
Okay, that's it.
Doctor's Office, MetLife, train station, Madison Hotel, rods, Red Dog, this could not, it's literally in the middle of the commercial quarter. Thank you, I apologize for going over by a minute.
Thank you, thank you, we appreciate your comments. We have time for one more.
So Justin?
Justin. Mr. Justin, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Justin. Please give your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Justin Helms, 87 Independence Way. Like the gentleman before, definitely support the initiative. Six reasons. The building will only become more beautiful if you've seen the six-story Meatpacking District flagship, as it was mentioned earlier. It is itself a work of art. To be able to have something like that literally within walking distance of my home, I'm very excited about. Second point, the restaurant and wine bar would really be a welcome addition to the community. We don't have a ton of things within walking distance, and it would be really nice to have one more option, or a high-class option, such as what Restoration Hardware is proposing. The third thing I'd like to throw out there is, you know, we've heard a little bit about additional traffic. I don't believe that additional traffic will be noticeable. Regarding the off-street parking, I think the solution they have to make sure that people aren't parking on the streets is a fair one, that there's going to be some valet support, people can cross the street. Sure, there's a bit of concerns around people being intoxicated and a bit of a dangerous situation there, but I think it's a manageable situation. The fifth, I think this will have a positive effect on people's property valuations, not significantly, but having an establishment like this within walking distance does add a bit of prestige and notoriety. And lastly, I am a fan of Restoration Hardware. It would be really cool to have a store like that so close by. So with everything said, please do approve the redevelopment plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. We appreciate your comments. I'm going to go for one more, and that's it.
So Joshua O'Neill?
Joshua O'Neill, are you there?
Oh, I'm here.
Okay, Joshua, you've got five minutes.
Wow.
Please give your name and address.
All right, it's good to see that Tom Maoli was there. When I was just looking at the plan the other day, I know that he owns 73 Canfield.
You need to give your name and address.
Oh, yeah, that's the important part, right? Joshua O'Neill, 24 Seymour Drive. I'm definitely not opposed to the redevelopment. I just kind of had a couple questions when I was looking over the plan originally. Again, it's great to see that Tom Maoli was there. I know that he owns the house at the end of the cul-de-sac, which is 73 Canfield Road, and I wasn't sure if there was a plan for that site as well.
Not as far as redevelopment plan.
Okay. All right. And then other than that, I just had a concern about the traffic, mainly just because I use that new light there at the end of Canfield that heads toward 24. But other than that, I agree with many others that this is a great way to preserve the structure itself, and I think it is a great addition or can be. Just, it seems rather grand in scope, but that's kind of my only concern. Otherwise, looks good.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for sharing your comments, and thank you for keeping it under the five-minute limit. We appreciate that. Okay, we have come to the end of our public comment for this evening, and what we're going to...
One more hand is up.
Okay, all right, we have one more person left, and that's it. This is really it, the final person.
Sean Maransky?
Sean.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, committee members. Glad I made it under the wire. I live at 16 Thomas Payne Road. I'd like to speak in favor of the redevelopment plan ordinance. Broadly speaking, the plan would revitalize a site in combination with preserving the Abbey Building with its unique design, preserving its history, and the use that's being considered is a destination use. It's a unique use as opposed to other more typical uses that I would talk about briefly. Part of this redevelopment plan ordinance as well is that it's not only a benefit to the developer, but it talks about public benefits. What kind of benefits does it bring to the community? And I see three of them right off the top. One is the preservation aspect with regards to using the Abbey Building as the core of this development, preserving the history and the integrity of the building. The second talks about realigning the intersection with Punch Bowl and Canfield, one that I'm familiar with either driving or running in that area. The traffic lights have been a terrific addition, but I believe that straightening out those roads and aligning them would be an added bonus for the area as well. And finally, fostering commerce along Madison Avenue. You know, with the Abbey and the three other corners, you have an intersection that has medical office uses, JCPN L, Crummond Foster, which invested a substantial amount of, a substantial amount in its improved office facility, and here where the developer is proposing substantial improvements. Mr. Maoli talked about the zoning, the OSGU zoning, and looking at the permitted uses compared to the OL5 uses in the area, it's not really practical for development on the site. He mentioned about day schools and churches and other houses of worship. It doesn't permit offices. It permits single-family detached dwellings under certain circumstances that really don't fit into this particular neighborhood. And when you look at the potential uses that could be considered here, which none of them would be permitted under the existing zoning, you know, people talked about townhouses or apartments that could be condominium units. This lot, the building, are more oriented away toward the single-family development to the rear, and such townhouse uses couldn't be practically integrated into the neighborhood nearby, so it wouldn't be a fit. I've heard some people talk about the quote retail unquote aspect of this use. We're not talking about a strip center or a drive-through restaurant. These are activities that really aren't suitable for the neighborhood or for this corridor. Banks, there's no demand. When you drive down Madison Avenue... Banks, there's no demand, when you drive down Madison Avenue toward Morris Town, you have TD Bank, it's been vacant for almost as long as I've lived here, I've lived here ten years, um, it's just sitting there, and it, it, it's of no, um, contribution to that corridor. And then finally, you're talking about office buildings, well, before COVID, because of the changes in the workplace, demand was shrinking for office space, that there was a need for less office space. Now, even if that demand comes back, it's still gonna be lower than when many of these office buildings were developed, um, the office building at, um, Madison and Con, where Jacobs used to be, it's completely vacant, I see the sign out there for about fifty-five thousand square feet they're attempting to lease, you know, so when you consider the limited number of uses in the OSGU zone, and also that many of the uses that you see along the Madison Avenue corridor are not even permitted here, so this is a difficult situation for this site. I do believe the redevelopment plan, based on my review of it and hearing, uh, testimony, um, from Mr. Phillips, there was talk, there's gonna be no warehousing of, um, product on the site, other than display, um, what's being displayed, parking is going to be addressed, um, setbacks preserving the front yard, no left turns onto Canfield, a lot of these issues are gonna be addressed during the site plan process. Yes, the foundation of the plan is going to be set with this redevelopment plan ordinance, however, this still has to go through another level of scrutiny and review before it's ultimately signed off on. So for the reasons I've discussed, I would respectfully ask that you adopt the redevelopment plan ordinance, thank you.
Thank you, Sean, we appreciate your comments. Okay, that is it for public comment tonight, yes, Mr. Jorby?
I know we're past time, but I think fairness to those who came in person, we did, uh, allow more people to talk via Zoom than we, than we would, so I would request that we allow one or two more folks from outside to do a comment.
Okay, it's okay with me, if that is okay with everyone else here?
How many people to be allowed for Zoom?
I don't know.
It's five and five.
Five and five? Yes, we did, that's true. Okay, is there someone standing out there right now?
Oh, we have to go blind everybody.
Okay, then in that case, we're going to put it off until the next meeting, sorry for it, we, whatever, um, uh, confusion there may be on this, I was only planning to do two, but then some of our people did not take their five minutes, which was appreciated, so we had time for a few more. Um, at this point, I would like to turn it over to, uh, Mr. Phillips, and we'll have Mr. Phillips address the questions that have come up this evening, and then I will have a concluding comment or so, um, at the end of the meeting, and if anyone from the township committee, uh, has any comments as well, I, I do not have a list of questions that...
I don't think there were many, I'm just gonna check if there did.
Okay, we did say that, uh, we, at the end of this committee, the meeting would answer any questions that were directed at us, the township committee, that we did not answer directly during the public commentary, I don't, I, I'm waiting for that list if there is such a list.
There may not be, I think there's just placed comments.
Okay, very good, okay, so, uh, Mr. Phillips, um, if you could, questions that have been brought up tonight?
Thank you, uh, Mayor, I guess the first question I have is, um, how, how much time do I have, and, um, because I have been taking notes, and there've been a number of issues raised by the public as well as follow-up issues raised by the township committee, and I know I'm coming back and can address this, and also I do wanna at some point, and I don't know whether you wanna do it this evening or not, I, and it, that will, it will take a little bit more time, is I do wanna, uh, address Mr. Stack's testimony and report, so, um, sort of at your disposal in terms of how you wanna do this.
Okay, I thought, and I'm open to any comments, uh, my colleagues on the committee may have, is for you to go until ten thirty, and we'll see if, if, I feel like ten thirty would be a good stop time, and we'll see where you're at at that point, if you need five more minutes, if you can do that, if you need another hour, then we're gonna, uh, go to the next meeting, so we'll play it by ear and see where you're at at ten thirty, is that okay with you guys?
Okay, that's fine, Mayor, I think what I'll do then is I'll try and address the Stack testimony and report, and that will probably, I'm just guessing, will take us closer to ten thirty, and we'll decide then whether we wanna just put off the, again, I've been taking notes, put that off, we're coming back, but I'll, I'll let you decide at, at that point.
Okay.
So, um, I had the opportunity, uh, obviously to, uh, listen to Mr. Stack's testimony, I also had the opportunity to review his, uh, report, um, he pretty much covered everything in his report, um, in his testimony, but, um, I'm gonna address, uh, both this evening, and I'm gonna, kinda follow, um, his report in, uh, in my responses, and the, the first issue that he raises is the master plan consistency, and he raised a, a number of issues, and the first issue that he raised, uh, was what I'll refer to as the not inconsistent with the master plan finding of the planning board that he objected to. Uh, and I will say that not only is it entirely acceptable, uh, in terms of, uh, basically referring to the, uh, redevelopment plan being not inconsistent with the master plan, and I will say that planning boards use this language all the time, uh, not just Morris Township, but other planning boards, but it actually comports with the requirements of the local redevelopment and housing law, which uses the phrase inconsistent with the master plan when dealing with the requisite planning board review. So, quite frankly, I'm not quite sure why this issue was raised by Mr. Stack, and I can assure you that the language that was used by the planning board was appropriate and consistent with the statute. The second issue that he raised, and I don't recall him bringing this up this evening, but it is in his report, is, uh, with regard to the master plan reexamination report, and, uh, in that the, the statute does not require that a public hearing be held, and he is correct, however, in connection with the two thousand seventeen master plan reexamination that the Morris Township Planning Board prepared and adopted, uh, it was noticed for and held as a public hearing back in two thousand seventeen, and I wanted to basically get that point across. Third, with regard to the issue of the two thousand seventeen reexamination having little or no weight, in his opinion, relative to the nineteen ninety-four master plan, the recommendation in the, uh, reexamination report regarding exploring new, potential new uses for the abbey, uh, was in a section of that report that was entitled, "Recommended Changes to the Master Plan and Development Regulations." This was a recommended master plan change on the part of the planning board, recognizing that the OSGU zoning of the abbey was no longer viable for the property. The fact that a specific use was not cited at the time does not invalidate that recommendation, and in fact, I will share with you that I was recently involved in land use litigation within the past year, where the court upheld a zone change, notwithstanding the fact that the master plan recommendation used similar language, essentially, the language recommendation be that, um, uses, uh, be explored, alternative uses be considered within a zone without further specification or detail other than via example. Uh, I would also add that the preservation of historic sites is one of the expressed goals of the nineteen ninety-four master plan, and lastly, I would just add that with regard to its determination of master plan consistency, the New Jersey courts have opined that a planning board is entitled to, and I quote, deference and great weight in terms of its determination on master plan consistency. The next issue he raises is the off-site parking not permitted. So first, again, I just, you, I think everyone needs to recognize that what's being proposed off-site is solely for possible overflow parking during the periods of peak demand when the office use is inactive, uh, this parking may or not, may or may not be needed, uh, it is, as I mentioned, intended as a safeguard to protect the public and adjacent residences, it may actually go away after the monitoring period, and this type of temporary off-site arrangement is not uncommon in my experience, and it is often done without a formal application to any board, but be that as it may, uh, I think, recognize that restaurants are actually a permitted use in the OL-five zone where this off-site parking would take place, and that off-site parking for the restaurant use would be considered a principal use on the OL-five zone lot and not an accessory use, because it can't be accessory if it's not on the same lot as the restaurant, and also consider that Morris zoning ordinance does not prohibit two principal uses on a lot. And lastly, even assuming a use variance was required, it would not invalidate this redevelopment plan, the applicant would either have to obtain the relief or seek a parking variance from the planning board at the time of site plan. Um, Stack indicates that the plan is tailored for a specific development, my answer is yes it is, that's what redevelopment plans do. Also, let me emphasize and state for the record, because I took exception to this in his report, that the plan was not prepared by the redevenir, it was prepared by my firm with input from the entire TCC after numerous discussions and conceptual plan iterations that were shared between the TCC and the prospective redevenir, and with the full knowledge of the administration and the township committee, who were given periodic updates and who provided input at those times. So, again, I just have to be clear for the record to refute that accusation in his report. He opines that the new development overshadows the historic abbey, I would respectfully disagree. Uh, I think more importantly, however, uh, and this has been brought up not only by myself but others, including the property owner and members of the public, no one has come forward, uh, at least since this current property owner has controlled this property in, since two thousand eight, it's twelve years, with any viable use alternatives to preserve the abbey. As I indicated earlier, the building needs work, it needs a capital investment, and there are no end users out there for which adaptive reuse makes sense, this was detailed at the time of the area need of redevelopment investigation, it's been tried without success, there hasn't been anyone in there again since two thousand eight, and the two prior uses, uses that were in there did not work out. So, we now have a user, a prospective user, with the resources and the track record to basically save this building from demolition, and to do it in a manner that is sensitive to its historic context and character. Uh, Mr. Stack indicates that this is a one-purpose specialized building design, again, yes, that is what a redevelopment plan often does. Uh, he also raises the issue of potential failure down the road, and I know that Mr. Mancuso raised this issue as well and asked me to address it, and all I can tell you in response is a couple of things. I would just look out there right now at all the vacant office buildings, retail centers, stores, banks in Morris Township, and, and also along Madison Avenue, uh, and beyond Morris Township for that matter, that no one saw coming twenty years ago, and I will just say that no one can predict the future, yet I think we can all understand the tenuous nature of this property in its present condition, and that can be weighed against the record and accomplishments of the prospective redevenir with similar properties of historic significance throughout the country. Next point he raises is overdevelopment of the site, I would again respectfully disagree. Uh, in fact, the coverage requirements that he cites for a single-family residential zone and large lot office zones are really inappropriate as a basis of comparison, and interestingly, we are proposing, notwithstanding what I just said, the same coverage requirements as the adjacent OL-five district, which is an office zone which mandates a larger lot size, and even though I believe a more appropriate comparison would be to the B-eleven zone, which exists, uh, on other portions of Madison Avenue, and the B-eleven zone would have allowed even more intense development on this site, I would further add that the FAR, that basically the allowable square footage in the redevelopment plan translates into, or equates to, on this site is about twenty-five percent exclusive of basement space and about thirty percent inclusive of basement space, uh, uh, including the basement space, the OL-five, OL-five FAR is twenty-five percent, this is hardly overdevelopment. Uh, Mr. Stack takes exception to the plan allowing for some stack parking, uh, I would indicate it actually limits the amount of paved services and is appropriate for both valet and employee parking. Inadequate buffers. Uh, first, I just need to point out that I think Mr. Stack has misread the zoning ordinance, the ten percent requirement in the ordinance that he refers to mandates that the buffer be based on the minimum lot width requirement in the zone, not the actual lot width. So if you look again, just as a point of comparison to the B-eleven zone, for example, um, and again, uh, he can, he uses a comparison to an office zone, which the site is zoned for, but in B-eleven, the required buffers as applied to this site would actually be less than what the redevelopment plan mandates. I will also say, and this is why I, in answer to other questions, I think how important it is that the issue of the buffer be worked out at the time of site plan with the board, the professionals, and the neighbors, but the effect of a buffer is more than just its depth, in this case, the buffer, uh, is going to be, with the exception of the house that is owned by Mr. Maoli, the buffer is gonna equate to fifteen feet because that's the parking setback. Uh, it's also the quality of the landscaping, the fencing, and whatever else is gonna be within that buffer to afford protection, right, that is important. I have seen fifty-foot buffers that provide less protection than ten-foot buffers, and I think with the right landscape architect involved, and RH has clearly, at least by their word, has made a commitment to use, uh, a very highly qualified landscape architect, they can do a lot, working with the board and the public within a fifteen-foot, uh, area. Um, tree removal, tree removal is inevitable here, it is inevitable, uh, we made it clear in the redevelopment plan that existing mature specimen trees should be preserved where practical, the developer will also be subject to the tree removal and replacement requirements, which are in the existing land development ordinance, and again, the planning board, as, uh, Jeff had indicated on numerous occasions this evening, will address this more fully at the site plan review stage. Uh, I would also note that much of the existing vegetation along the internal lot line boundaries is really not worthy of retention, and I think the developer will address the appropriate landscaping and buffering, again, with the planning board at site plan with input from the neighboring public. Questionable parking standards, um, I think I've already explained the logic behind the, uh, parking and why we did what we did, I'm not gonna belabor that, but I think the key again is that this is a unique and idiosyncratic use, which is why we instituted safe, the safeguards we discussed, I believe the parking requirement is adequate for this use. Uh, safety issues related to the off-site parking, and I guess with reference to, uh, alcohol consumption, so, uh, yes, there is alcohol consumption, uh, contemplated here, it's permitted, but, uh, this is, this is not a sports bar. Uh, also, the off-site parking will be for either valet or employees, and only if the overflow parking is... and only if the overflow parking is necessary during the peak periods. And I again remind the board that this location is now at a signalized intersection with a crosswalk feature, again, designed for safe crossing Madison Avenue. Traffic circulation, I think I addressed that in large part in response to Mr. Arvinidi's question. But I will say that, again, this is really critical. The redevelopment plan makes it clear that there are no left turns permitted out of any access on Canfield Road. And again, the physical manifestation of that directive will be determined at the time of site plan, as will the number of accesses from Canfield Road. And even though Mr. Caputo is correct that two are permitted, I think we're ultimately going to determine that at the time of site plan. The TCC, during its meetings, actually wasn't convinced that two access points were needed. That was discussed with RH. They would look into it. I will say that one access point, at least in my professional opinion, and I believe Mr. Slate agrees, is going to be required from Canfield in order to basically service the restaurant. But again, no left-hand turns out. Stormwater management. Clearly, this is an issue that's addressed and properly addressed and best addressed at the site plan approval stage, as it always is, in connection with any development. By the way, I will point out to you that RH wanted the ability to put detention in the front lawn area, and the TCC said no. And again, I'll defer to Jim, who's the expert on this. But there's probably going to be some underground detention here. Just one other thing as an aside, and I'm not sure the TCC or the public understand this, but in the iterations between the TCC and RH, you know, there were plans that were put forth before the TCC where the buffers were as little as five feet to internal property lots. And that was not acceptable. And we basically made them go back and change their plans in order to provide buffers, at least in terms of the depth of the buffer, that we felt were suitable with the appropriate landscaping down the road in order, again, to afford those protections to the immediately adjacent neighbors. Integrity of the historic preservation. Quite candidly, I would counsel the township committee to consider the experts on this. The Historic Preservation Commission, the Township's Historic Preservation Commission, and the Morris County Historical Society, they're better qualified to address this issue than either Mr. Steck or myself, and they were clearly heard this evening. And then lastly, and this is a theme that's come up by me, members of the township committee, and the public, is the issue, the last issue raised by Mr. Steck, which is the commercial intrusion. And I think the bottom line here is that the OSGU zoning is really no longer tenable for this property. I think the TC knows it. I think the planning board knows it. And I think some other solution or alternative has to be found for this property. I think the reality is that this site is either going to be a commercial site, such as proposed here, or it's going to be higher-density multifamily residential with an affordable component. And again, I can tell you, this is what the TCC is seeing with all the redevelopment proposals, and particularly those on Madison Avenue. And again, on the commercial side, we're seeing convenience stores with gas, drive-through restaurants, which we do not believe are appropriate for the site, again, for a host of reasons. And they're also unlikely to see the preservation of the abbey with these uses. So I would just leave the township committee with the thought that I don't think you can just view this proposal in a vacuum. And I think, all things considered, I believe this is a reasonable redevelopment scheme for the township, for the surrounding residents, and the residents of Morris Township at large. Pretty good timing, Mayor, 10:30.
That's very good timing. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Okay, so we are at the end of our time. I have just a couple of comments that I'd like to conclude with. I'd like to thank all the residents, members of the public who came and joined us this evening outside. This was a completely new way of conducting a meeting. We've never done this before. We did have some technical glitches. I apologize for the absence of video at the beginning. It's my understanding that was restored, and I'm glad to hear that. We will do some debriefing at our end to see what we need to do to make things better for the, for next week's September 3 meeting. And I will say also, I know we've gotten a lot of comments from residents. This is not an ideal way to conduct a meeting. I agree with that. As I sit here and have experienced tonight's meeting, I miss having the public right here in the room. And I agree, that's an important element of communication that's part of our meeting. But at the same time, there are other considerations at play here. COVID puts us in extremely difficult circumstances. And we've talked about the, you know, the difficulties we've had and the choice that we've made, a majority of us on the committee, to proceed with this. So I will also say that I appreciate everyone's comments tonight, our professionals, the members of the committee, and the residents. I feel like there's a tremendous amount of food for thought. And as I said at the beginning, we are going to give every comment, every question, every suggestion, very careful consideration. I would like to request that we have available video of this meeting sooner than later. I know for our township committee meetings, we are able to produce video of the meeting usually within two days or so. So if we can have video of the meeting, I know that would help me. I'd like to review certain portions of the testimony before next week's meeting, and I think that would be helpful to anyone who's interested from the public as well. And as far as I know, unless something else comes up in the meantime, we should be devoting the entire meeting, next meeting, to comment from the public. And it may be, I want to do a little thinking. We had, we had certain time that it took in between speakers in person to clean the mic and the podium. Perhaps we'll do it differently and sort of flip back and forth between in-person and Zoom. I don't know. We're going to think about that. Like I said, we'll do our debrief and make whatever improvements we think are necessary for next week. And so with that, that's all I have for this evening. Do any other members of the township committee have any comments to conclude?
Can I make one comment, please, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Jermaine Cusso, please.
I just would like to commend Mr. Phillips for all the work he's done. He was absolutely outstanding, answering questions from the top of his head without notes. I'm very, very proud to have you as the planner in Morris Township, sir. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you for those kind words, Mr. Mancuso.
You're welcome.
And you reminded, Mr. Mancuso, that part of what I plan to do before the next meeting is reach out by phone to every member of the township committee and confer with you on what your thoughts are about how tonight went and whatever suggestions you have for next week.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would like to thank the members of the public who came out and listened tonight, stayed till 10:30. Public input is really important to all of us here, so thank you for doing that. My apologies for anybody who's outside who didn't get to be heard tonight. Thank you for your dedication in attending the meeting. And next meeting, as Mayor Wilson said, we won't have all this testimony. We're just going to be hearing residents. And I assume that everybody will be able to be heard next meeting, so I urge you to come back. We want to hear from you. We want your input. We want to hear what the residents have to say before we make our decision. So again, urge public participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, I will need a motion to carry tonight's meeting to September 3 at 6:00.
I'll move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You are adjourned and will reconvene on September 3.
Good night, everybody.
Yeah.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Yes, please.